Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners Meeting for February 12, 2019. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for coming to our meeting today. We'll begin our meeting with the invocation by Mr. Dan Phillips and the Pledge of Allegiance by Jeff Ross. Please stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Father, we are assembled here in this room in your presence not because this used to be a place of commerce, not because it used to be a movie theater, but, Father, this is a place where we, Putnam County, have chosen to designate to conduct the affairs of our county. And these that sit on the commission have made themselves available to the population and their vote, committing themselves to want to serve in this place. So, Father, everything that is done at this time, regardless of how insignificant it may seem on the agenda, may we all remember that you have ordained government. It has come from you, the peaceful, gentle, wise ruling of your people and their needs. So, Father, bless this time that these men choose to assemble together to conduct the affairs, the business affairs, of this county. And for any and all that lack wisdom, may they remember what you've told us in your word, that if any man will ask, that you will grant it and grant it liberally. Father, we ask all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Phillips, and for the invocation, and Commissioner Ross for leading us in the pledge. Commissioners, on our agenda, item number two, approval of minutes of December 11, 2018, regular workshop, January 8, 2019, regular meeting, and January 15, 2019, regular workshop.
Mr. Chairman, I move as read.
Or I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, as the next item, number three on our agenda, recognitions. I'd like to call up Sheriff Gator Deloach and Colonel Joe Wells. We have some special recognition. It's always great to be able to honor some of our employees for going above and beyond their call of duty, and also recognizing a tenure of an employee. So, I'll turn it over to Sheriff Gator Deloach.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to go out of order just a bit. We actually have a citizen in the audience with us, Mr. Ernie Pupor. I'd like to call him up to the podium with me, please.
I spoke with him earlier. I know he's here.
I think you're not speaking very closely. They're having trouble hearing you there, Sheriff.
Could be. Today, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to present Mr. Ernie Pupor with a Distinguished Service Award presented by the Florida Sheriff's Association, with sincere thanks for your loyal support as an honorary member of the Florida Sheriff's Association and for assisting in its continuing efforts to provide the best possible law enforcement for the citizens of Florida. This has, it's a special privilege for me to present Mr. Pupor with this award today because the Florida Sheriff's Association, which was formed in 1883, is the primary support organization that all 67 sheriff's offices across the state rely on to provide some of the best and finest training in the nation, to ensure that our deputies are at the forefront of all the current trends and technology that's available to law enforcement. So, I'd like to offer Mr. Pupor my sincere thanks for his continued support of this distinguished organization and present him today with this distinguished service award certificate. Okay, now, if I could have Deputy Jesse Fussell and Deputy Thomas Townsend join me at the podium.
Dr. Malanick, if you had also joined the sheriff, we would appreciate it. And just one last check, I'm not sure if this gentleman was able to make it today, but is Mr. Richie Lagabed in the office with, or in the audience with us today? Mr. Lagabed? Commissioners, citizens of Putnam County, it is our pleasure to introduce to you today Deputy Jesse Fussell and Deputy Thomas Duncan Townsend. Deputy Fussell is a graduate of Crescent City High School, where he acquired an interest in law enforcement through a criminal justice class taught by a Putnam County Sheriff's Office Youth Resource Deputy. Deputy Fussell went on to graduate the Criminal Justice Academy at St. John's River State College and joined the Sheriff's Office in 2012 as a corrections deputy. Deputy Fussell transferred to law enforcement in 2017. Deputy Townsend graduated from Palaca High School and St. John's River State College before joining the Sheriff's Office in 2017, putting local talent to work, serving our community. On Christmas night, 2018, Deputy Sheriff Jesse Fussell and Thomas Duncan Townsend responded to a residence on Silver Lake Road regarding a male patient who had collapsed. Deputy Fussell was the first to arrive on the scene and quickly to determine that the patient was not breathing and had no identifiable pulse. As Deputy Fussell was working to establish an airway on the patient, Deputy Townsend arrived and began preparing an automated external defibrillator. Every deputy sheriff in Putnam County is trained to use and carries an automated external defibrillator, which are often referred to as AEDs. These life-saving tools assist the deputies in determining if the human heart is fibrillating and, when appropriate, allows the deputy sheriff to introduce an electrical shock in an attempt to return the heart to a normal rhythm. As the AED was being initiated by Deputy Townsend, Deputy Fussell began CPR. During the life-saving efforts, the deputies continued providing rescue breaths, chest compressions, and multiple electrical shocks. The efforts of Deputy Fussell and Deputy Townsend continued until Putnam County Emergency Medical Services arrived on scene. By this time, the patient's heart had returned to a normal rhythm, and he was breathing on his own. Following the incident, the Sheriff's Office was contacted by several members of the medical staff at Putnam Community Medical Center and paramedics with Putnam County Fire Rescue, stating that the quick use of the AED, combined with correct CPR procedures, undoubtedly saved the life of the patient, who is recovering nicely. While most of us were comfortably celebrating Christmas for our families, these two exceptional deputy sheriffs were selflessly serving the citizens of Putnam County. Their actions on Christmas Day provided one Putnam County family with the most wonderful gift one could give, the gift of a loved one. The family now has the opportunity to enjoy life together due to the professional actions of deputies Fussell and Townsend. Deputy Jesse Fussell and Deputy Thomas Duncan Townsend are hereby awarded the Life Saving Medal.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and those in the audience with us today, it is my distinct pleasure to present the Life Saving Award to Deputy Sheriff Jesse Fussell and Deputy Sheriff Thomas Townsend. I'd like to yield the podium now to Dr. John Malanick, who is a medical director for the county, to give us a little insight and background on the use of AEDs and the introduction of the program here in Putnam County.
Good morning. It was about 10 years ago we took on this initiative to arm our deputies in law enforcement with AEDs in the community because they are first responders and often arrive on scene before EMS has a chance to get there. And that time was a novel idea. We were one of the first northward to do so, and we thank very much the support of our leaders in that initiative and that grant that funded this project. Since then, we've had several uses of AEDs, several uses of law enforcement jumping in the line and doing CPR. I always joke with my CPR classes that a deputy would take a bullet for his friend, but often would not press on the chest if they could avoid it. But these are the two gentlemen, proven otherwise. I also want to thank, just thank you for the opportunity to show us, how I show you how much the community supports you as the way you support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to sweeten it a little bit, when we started this program, it was a collaborative effort between Sheriff's Office with Hansel Woods, Putnam County Fire, EMS, as well as law enforcement. I offered $1,000 reward to the deputies who could save lives, so here they are.
Oh, wow. Good job.
As always, we appreciate you. Thanks.
That concludes the presentation of our awards. I would like for the commissioners to meet us in front of the dais and get a quick photograph with these two final young men.
Okay, thank you.
Swap it. He's taller. You're gonna slide all the way by the chair. There we go. That's the one for the papers. No, I'm sorry.
Did your families come up? Is your home up there?
Yeah, I just got a whole book. I gotta go, a whole album. Now, I'll play it today.
Might be fun to play all the...
Sorry, do you have taller? Yep, Bill, yep. Actually, Bill, slide closer to Jeff. There we go. Then, yeah, Tom, stay.
Jeff's jacket's pretty loud.
All right. Everybody look this way. Okay, one, two, three.
Congratulations.
This is pretty cool. Very cool. Yes, it is. Got a lot of love in you. Yeah, I knew that.
That's the fun part of this job.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
Okay, next agenda item, or next item, presentations. I'll ask Ms. Nancy Russo to come forward to present the 2018 Annual SMA Healthcare Activities Report.
That's tough to follow, just letting you know that. So, we have successfully completed one year of our Crisis Triage and Treatment Unit, and you have a summary of our performance measures that were required by the grant, as well as those items that we were tracking for the year. And some of the performance measures are not applicable yet because those start after a year of our providing services. We begin to track how they've done post one year of services. But for the other ones that were for the year, all of them, we were able to meet without going under the percentages required for the grant. And for the monthly tracking items, we are hoping that for 2019, our transports will increase and we'll be able to provide more services for the residents of the county, as well as a cost savings to the county for the transportation that we are providing. Are there any questions about anything on the report?
Commissioners, any questions?
Just one comment.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Harvey.
Nancy, I just want to thank you. I was chairman of that organization, this committee, for a long time, and we were promised savings would take place, and surely it did, for your hard work that you've done through this community and bringing this to light. But I just want to thank you for all the hard work you've done for Putnam County and what you're going to do because you've got bigger plans for Putnam County. So, I just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ross?
I'll echo what Commissioner Harvey said. One thing that, as chairman this year of the committee, I'm, one of my goals is to try to see if we can get in-county facilities for treatment and save on that 21,000 miles a year of driving. I think everybody in the committee was pretty stoked about that. Thank you very much for your time.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, next, Ms. Cheryl Lynch, Small Business Development Council, annual report and update on the Food Innovation Center.
Good morning, gentlemen. Hope you're all doing well. We have the annual report for all of 2018 in front of you, highlighting the last quarter and then the calendar year with comparison of 2017. The one thing I'd like to point out to you is the big dollar difference on the loans. If you remember my last report, we would see a shift in the way the economy was moving. We would see more loans and dollars being reinvested versus startups and things of that nature. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have one. Would you like to elaborate on what Janice talked about last night with the skills training and workforce development?
To the best of my ability, I will try. Our advisory council held two subcommittee meetings addressing how to supply additional services to the Hispanic community and also to how to deal with the workforce shortage that a lot of businesses are experiencing with some kind of workforce development. There were minutes taken. We're submitting those minutes to the city CRA because I believe Commissioner Campbell is working on doing things with the students, kind of a spinoff of what the program I did last year with getting the juniors involved with small businesses to get them trained into a job once they graduate for those that are not going to go to college. That's it in a nutshell, I believe. So, we are, the SBDC, is trying to help businesses figure out solutions instead of saying, oh, sorry. Yeah, everybody's experienced that, but we're trying to bring many organizations to the table to help alleviate the issues that small businesses are having with finding help to run their businesses, and not only in construction, in the medical field, retail, you name it, everybody's experienced it across the board.
Yeah, I think you're correct. I think everybody across the board is feeling that pinch.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, if I could. Something else we discussed last night at the CRA was the possibility of putting together a committee that would involve the SBDC, the Career Source, hopefully this board, the city commission, the CRA, to bring all the stakeholders together and make some real efforts towards coming up with a skills training center within Putnam County that focuses on the development of these skills so we can start developing a trained workforce.
Any other comments? Okay, let's see, you have Chance Clay and David Dinkins with you.
Yes, I'll let those gentlemen fill you in on the Food Innovation Center.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'd like to preface my comments by saying I appreciated the invocation this morning and the reminding us where we get our wisdom from or where we should get it from is God. I'd just like to comment on Philippians 2:13. We do pray that. I pray that every day, and that's where I ask God to work in me to do His will and not mine, and I fail miserably at that, but still strive to do that under His power. So, I think that's probably the most important thing I could say today and just encourage y'all, and again, thank y'all for being in leadership and being under the Lord's authority. That's where this county will be successful. So, again, thank y'all. I have five points, very quickly, to give you an update. On the First Coast Fresh Food Innovation Center, just a quick reminder, that is part of the Northeast Florida Regional Council's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for 2014-2019. It is one of 12 projects that have been identified in that plan as a vital project. The specific project here in Putnam County is, the location is the State Farmers Market. It's a 13,500-square-foot facility, and the proposal is to, again, a food innovation center that will include two certified kitchens, FDA, USDA, that can be utilized for many purposes. This is a public-use facility for people to rent out space to cover the cost of the facility. It will also include bottling lines where advanced manufacturing training can take place for workforce development. The food safety and culinary training, food service training, can also take place in those kitchens. So, that's a quick summary of what's there. The update is Senator Perry, Representative Payne, Congressman Yoho, and their staff have been very diligent and supportive of this effort, and they continue to advocate on behalf of this project, so I would like to thank them. Congressman Yoho's staff has been in touch with the Economic Development Administration, where a proposal has been submitted for $1.92 million. It's tied to the Hurricane Irma Disaster Relief Fund, so we're still waiting to hear from that. Once we hear from that, we'll make the determination whether or not to go forward with an additional EDA funding proposal. That is a regional strategic innovation grant from the Economic Development Administration. The most we could ask for there is $750,000. Also, Representative Payne is providing leadership to a legislative appropriation for $637,570, $637,570, and that would fund the bottling line portion of the Food Innovation Center. That also would help with the required 20% to 30% match from the EDA. So, again, that's very important. We appreciate Representative Payne's leadership on that. And the last thing is Congressman Yoho's office and Representative Payne have asked us to take a look at the Florida Job Growth Fund. Governor DeSantis is supporting that in his budget. He also has done an executive order related to workforce development training. So, you know, we don't know how the politics will play out on that, but at some point, we would like to maybe get with County Administrator Suggs or Matt, or however you direct us, to discuss that with the county. We think that the county may be the appropriate applicant for that, but would like your guidance on determining that. So, that's a quick update. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Chance Clay is here. He is the chairman of the Steering Committee for the Food Innovation Center. Again, this has been, we've been working on this since 2014, and it has been identified as an important project in all three of the tri-county ag counties, St. John's, Flagler, and Putnam County. In Flagler County, we did an agribusiness retention program, and it was identified, processing as an important element to sustaining agriculture in the area. So, Chance is providing leadership, and I think he would like to give you a couple of comments, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. First off, I want to thank you guys for your leadership in this beautiful county we call home. You know, there's two things, I think, that make this project real important to the county. First off is profitability for our local farmers, second is workforce development. I think most of y'all up here have had or do have a business and understand tight margins and profitability and how important that is, and I think you realize that the farmers nowadays, we battle tight margins and profitability. We have to get creative. We have to find niche markets. We have to do other things to stay profitable. It's just not as easy as it was at one time. With this Food Innovation Center, it gives us the ability to turn maybe unmerishable fruit or vegetables or something that might not make a fresh market, but we can take that and make coleslaw out of it. We can take that and make jellies and jams out of it. We can really add value to our products, which is key, is going to be key to the success of farmers in the future. And not only that, but you know, we've had some interest from St. John's River State College in partnering with us on the workforce development side and the kitchens. And I think that, you know, with these bottling lines, they're going to be automated, they're going to be run with computers, but it'll be a smaller scale of what people can use in a larger factory. So, not only will they learn the steps and maybe be able to transition from working in the innovation center to a larger job in a bigger factory, but I just, you know, my heart's in agriculture, my heart's in this county, and I want agriculture to stay in this county, and I want business to stay in this county, and I want business to come into this county. And I think this, and not only can we, we can be a pilot for Florida. There's a lot of state farmers markets around the state that are just sitting idle, and why not, here in Putnam County, why not let's make a good thing for the farmers and the members of the community and be a poster child for the rest of the community, or the rest of the state? You know, we can be a model for Florida on these state farmers markets. So, we've got support from Congressman Yoho, of course, from Senator Perry and Representative Payne, and I appreciate y'all coming to the Food Innovation Center a couple of months back, but I ask again for your support and help pushing this forward and the support of the community. I appreciate it. And while I've got you, the citizens and farmers and ranchers of West Putnam County, granted and floor home, sure do appreciate the drainage work y'all have done on the floor home drainage canal, and it's nice to see water flowing, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chance. Commissioner Turner, I believe you have some questions?
Y'all, I'd like to tell you that I appreciate your volunteering for something that you have so much passion for. I think it's a great, a great thing that y'all are trying to do over there. I would like to request that we find a spot in the not-too-distant future to put them on a workshop, and let's discuss this in workshop, see what we can do to aid them to help bring this project to fruition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ross?
David, would it be possible for you to, for the edification, folks in the audience, maybe describe how this would affect the cotton industries, the small farmers that may not have the opportunity, and maybe give an example of meat in a bottled product like Commissioner Harvey just bottled his own daddled pepper sauce?
Right. Well, there's currently a company that does daddled pepper, but they have somebody else bottle it, and it's not as cost-effective for them. So, they would actually come in and use the bottling line for maybe two to three days a week. And again, that would help pay the bills, and so that's an example. This particular company we're mentioning, they've already worked with us and SBDC on an export marketing plan. I failed to mention that, but we're looking well beyond, you know, mom-and-pop stuff. We're looking at export opportunities. So, there is an export plan developed for...
do to aid them to help bring this project to fruition. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
David, would it be possible for you to, for the edification, folks in the audience, maybe describe how this would affect the cottage industries, the small farmers that may not have the opportunity and maybe give an example of meat in a bottled product like Commissioner Harvey just bottled his own daddled pepper sauce?
Right. Well, there's currently a company that does daddled pepper, but they have somebody else bottle it, and it's not as cost-effective for them. So they would actually come in and use the bottling line for maybe two to three days a week. And again, that would help pay the bills, and so that's an example. This particular company we're mentioning, they've already worked with us and SBDC on an export marketing plan. I failed to mention that, but we're looking well beyond, you know, mom-and-pop stuff. We're looking at export opportunities. So there is an export plan developed for daddled pepper products. There's a local export plan developed for blueberries. There's a local export plan developed for beef products. So people using this facility not only have the physical infrastructure, but they also will get supported with their business plans and marketing efforts. But again, the small farmers, you know, there's many, many small farmers that can't afford, that's why we're doing it. People can't afford $2 million or even $100,000 for the equipment. So this will be a shared-use facility, and they will pay for using it, but it's something that they can afford. The cottage industry, which this doesn't necessarily apply for, the cottage law allows people to cook in their own home, but if they want to ensell that product now, they can do up to $50,000 with the Florida cottage law, but it does not allow them to take those products and be able to get it into a wholesale or retail operation. By having a certified kitchen, people will be able to take it to a retailer like Publix or Lucky's and market that. We've also had interest from like Florida International University. Cheryl and I have talked to them. They have an entrepreneur center, but they have a need for bottling, and they would direct people all the way from Miami up to here potentially, is what the director of that center has told us. So we think this will, you know, economic activity will generate a lot of entrepreneurship, and we don't know what will happen. But again, faith in God, we hope that He will bless us, and a lot of good things will happen. I don't know if I answered your question.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good job. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Tell me what you think about.
See his bottling line.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. Just want to encourage the commission to also remember the Development Authority. I serve as chair of the Development Authority. Just as we did with a small business development center when it first opened, we were able to help fund a portion of that startup cost for a couple of years. You know, we have tools and opportunities that we also could help because I certainly think that what you've talked about today with the Food Innovation Center, you know, helps solidify, you know, the importance of ag in our community and for locally sourced, locally grown products to be able to be viable out in the commercial world, I think is just something that helps us preserve that.
I agree.
Before all that farmland gets used for something else like houses. So anything the Development Authority can do to assist that, we'd be happy to. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, piggybacking on that just a little bit, maybe Tim, as chairman of the Development Authority, you could try to attend that workshop that we have on this. I'm personally very interested in trying to help these guys move this forward. I think it would be a real innovation for our community. And so, and another thing that we can discuss at workshop possibly would be also ways that the port could help them too, because the port is also there for economic development. That's the number-one thing. So anyhow, I just think we should look at a multi-layer approach to making this happen.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Turner. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harvey?
That's my personal sauce, and those daddled peppers came from University of Florida over there in Hastings, so just to let you know, okay? I'm not selling it. I'm just enjoying myself.
So if you're missing peppers, you know where they went?
Right. I don't know if anybody's tried it yet, so.
Yeah, I tried. It's good.
Oh, you did? Okay, all right, so.
It is worthy.
He had hair before he tried.
All right, thank you so much, Cheryl, for your update, and Clay, and also David. Okay, next, Mr. Stephen Barker. Fire Department ISO ratings and fire assessment fee. Welcome.
Morning. My name's Stephen Barker. Say, good morning to the county commissioners. Thank you for having me. I have this presentation. First, before I go any further, I need to make sure that I read a newspaper article that says I'm representing the Palaca Fire Department. I'm here just as a citizen and as a volunteer first responder. So I want to get that out of the way. Today, I would like to address the Fire Department ISO ratings affecting services provided in my community. In order for you to understand how we got to this point, first off, I'd like to give a brief history of the fire service in this county. I hopefully can address this issue so that all may see and understand why I'm standing here for the word today. During the mid-20th century, Putnam County Volunteer System was formed. As Putnam County started growing, so did the volunteer service. Many actions of local citizens volunteering actually helped dedicate Putnam County funding to help purchase fire apparatus and equipment for the surrounding fire districts. A total of 18 fire stations have been constructed in some form or fashion, either by land donation or by families privately funding the expense. Over this period, the volunteer fire department grew into an adequate first response fire service in the community, and the community was very much involved. Moving forward in this same time period, Putnam County EMS ambulance service was centrally located inside the city of Palaca Fire Department's downtown fire station. This was done working side by side with the city of Palaca Fire Department. Giving you this brief example of services progressing in the county will be why I'm bringing the ISO ratings to your attention today and in the fact of is the matter. Adequate fire service in the community has been graded by the ISO fire suppression rating over many years and also plays a huge role in many fire departments' first responsive roles. I'm sorry. It plays an even larger role in getting a baseline for surrounding fire departments' adequacy in the community and can dictate what your home and business insurance premiums will be. A grade level one through 10 is used by a privately-run, third-party company to assess the adequacy of local fire departments' first response, one being the best, 10 being the worst. As of this year, there's three level 10 ISO grades for some of the surrounding fire districts, including the one I live in. This equates to longer response times from surrounding fire departments to make up for the lack of response from fire stations the general public would believe is right down the road in many of the surrounding communities. Some of the recent reasoning is over the recession and another over the paid versus volunteer side of providing a guaranteed service to the community. I have seen this firsthand becoming a grave issue. There is not enough trained and certified volunteer firefighters in this county to continue to provide an adequate service. At this time, the Putnam County Firing Mess Service is comprised of eight ambulances, three EMS supervisors, one fire engine with four firefighters for 24 hours, and another fire engine with two firefighters for only 12 hours a day, Monday through Friday, not on the weekends. I know there is plans to build and operate a few more fire stations in the county to guarantee an adequate first response to medical and fire calls, but in reality, this is still only a Band-Aid on what is needed to provide an adequate service to the community. This, on the flip side, the volunteer service is also grossly understaffed, overworked, underpaid, and spread out to its limits almost daily to make up for the lack of first response I previously mentioned. Now, here we are currently at this pivotal moment in history where the county fire EMS service logically should be the first fire response department and volunteering should be supplemental. It has been completely left upside down opposite of that endeavor for decades. We now have 15 to 20 plus-minute windows of time with residential house fires and medical calls having no response from the volunteer fire stations in the county until adequate help arrives, most often from an ambulance crew or off-duty personnel to fill the void with volunteering their time. Imagine if you will, one of the many schools our children go to having a major medical or fire-related incident, and no one comes immediately from the fire department right down the street. With this already happening in our current times in the world, we know a much worse scenario can happen as we even reflect on this week in remembrance of the Stoneman Douglas School shooting in Florida taking place February 14, 2018. A lot of the Putnam County personnel on their two days off from their one day on need a break from their job. You cannot rely on someone to be in perpetual first response mode. It's physically and mentally unhealthy any way you look at it. My proposal of the commission today would be to please reconsider the lack of funding you're providing the fire service side of the community and possibly even consider drafting a new fire assessment fee that will encompass everyone in the community, giving their fair share of financial support to build up fire service to a service it should provide. I know there's a lot of doubt in how this will be accomplished in the community. As for a lot of Putnam County residents, we have seen a large issue to fund such an accomplishment, and there's been pushback against the idea of creating a stronger 24-hour first response fire service. I've done some research on the tax value assessment of properties, and with the $50,000 homestead exemption in place, it is cutting much of the needed funding off for growth in the public service. I believe it is time, whether we like it or not, to consider a better way to save this failing system by passing this exemption roadblock like many other counties and cities have done. We have many properties falling under the value of homestead exemption being almost non-taxable. I understand there is a special request in place for some to pay no taxes at all on their property, but as a resident of this county watching my physical and financial contribution to the fire assessment fee used in vain, it needs to be reevaluated. I am up for much more discussion on this issue, and I will be willing to give any honest answer to your questions you may have with my background, seeing all that I have seen in the community at large as a citizen and volunteer first responder. I have been at the ground level watching many of the listed fire departments in the county on a call-to-call basis for years. I have many examples of deficiencies I can give now or at a later date. Truly, my only request I would like this commission to do is give the matter a high regard. Thank you for your time listening to this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barker. Commissioner Rawls?
I really appreciate you taking the time to put that in writing. I mean, there's a lot of people talking in the background. Every week, I run into people that have the same concerns, and I don't think that they fully understand the correlation between ISO and insurance ratings. There's an inverse proportion, or actually a direct proportion, where the lower the ISO rating goes, the lower the insurance rating goes. So you're either going to pay your insurance company, or you're going to pay for lower ISO rating. Either way, you're going to pay. But I think it is time for us to start looking at getting away from what would be our ad valorem assessment model for taxation and look at other methods. And fire service and first response, before you got up, you saw what the sheriff's deputy was able to do. And I don't think there's a person in this room that wouldn't pay to have the life back of a family member or a dear friend in a situation like they were faced with. So I personally would encourage this commission at a future date, sooner than later, take this up for discussion. I'm not sure if we have this part of the strategic planning, but I think it really should be part going forward, and encourage the participation of citizens by having a citizens advisory council or steering committee that would have something to say as far as the formation of this service or the growing of this service. Because right now, from what I can tell, it doesn't look like we have a lot of citizens' participations in the form of a committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Barker, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to recess our regular border county commission meeting, and I'd like to convene our Port Authority meeting. Gentlemen, on the agenda, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of December 11, regular Port Authority meeting, and January 8, regular Port Authority meeting.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Rawls. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, this portion, I'd like to open up the public comment of the Port Authority meeting. Are there any people or any persons wishing to come and speak for or against any issue of the Port Authority? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and move to Agenda Item C, Office of Management, a Budget Amendment. Ms. Papel?
What you have before you is a request for you to authorize.
Ms. Papel, microphone, please.
Sir? Okay. What you have before you is a request to authorize overspending line in the budget that related to the cost of providing water to Georgia Pacific. Well, it's providing water, period. And there will be revenue that offsets this cost, but at this time, I don't know how much the revenue is. And I could do a budget amendment, but then I may have to do a second one and a third one. So I'd prefer to come back later in the year and bring you a budget amendment increasing revenues and increasing costs in the enterprise fund. And I didn't want to overspend the line without permission, so county administration recommended coming to you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Papel. Commissioner Turner?
The only question I have, do you feel like at this early stage that we're going to have the revenues to offset this later on?
I do not see the details, so I asked the very same question to Public Works, and they said yes. The revenues are covering the costs.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Just so we're clear, this is the water utility that the Port Authority has where we buy water from the city and resell it at the port into George Pacific, correct?
That is correct.
It looks like there's about an $8,000 per month line item in the form of revenue. Is that correct? Ms. Frank, does anybody know?
There is a revenue line and an expenditure line. I don't have those amounts with me.
I'd like to offer a motion, if I could, that we table this till we get to the workshop this afternoon. We could take action on it then possibly, until we can get some more answers. I mean, right now, we just, we don't have anything at all to act on.
I asked Mr. Tompkins if, the need be, to have detail, if he wants to come up.
Press, you want to come forward?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Tompkins is walking up, what this is, is we budgeted for an expense of that account based on historical numbers from previous years with the construction at GP. The use of the water after they put in their hydrant system for this project has caused us to have to purchase additional water through the city, which we then in turn charge Georgia Pacific for to recoup those costs. So Mr. Tompkins can answer from there.
Yes, sir. As we said, the budget was based on historic numbers of what we had spent for water at the Barge Port. Right now, George Pacific is running their own concrete plant for their expansion, and we put in a hydrant meter for them, and they're using 150,000, 180,000 gallons of water a month, which we are recouping that money. Right now, we have bills that are due to the city of Palaca for this water. So if we delay payment, then we get charged late charges on top of that. So what we're asking for is to go ahead and be able to overspend to pay these bills. I've done a complete analysis of the water system out there. I have not had a chance to finalize that. Right now, with the hydrant meter and the amount of water we're selling, George Pacific, we are actually breaking even ahead on the thing. Right now, we just need money to pay these bills, current bills to the city of Palaca.
So if I may, how far behind is George Pacific on their payables?
George Pacific is current.
So if they're paying us for the water as we're buying it, why are we going to overspend by $50,000?
The bills that we get from city of Palaca historically were, let's say, a couple thousand a month. Now they're up to 8,000, 9,000 a month. And I'll let Ms. Papel answer that.
It's not in the budget. We didn't budget the revenue coming in from Georgia Pacific, and we didn't budget the expenditures for this additional water. So the fix is just budgetary housekeeping.
I understand that. My question is, if George Pacific is current, are we current with the city of Palaca?
As far as I know, we are. I authorized an overspending of budget just last week so that we wouldn't incur a late fee. We are collecting revenue and we're paying bills, but we have a duty to stay within our budget. The fix is to increase revenue and expense, in this case, in the budget, but I don't know what that final number is going to be because this is ongoing. So I'd rather bring a budget resolution back to you in four, five, six months for 40,000 to increase revenue, 40,000 to increase expenditure, so that we, statutorily, we're required to stay within our budget, and we're going to overspend our budget because we didn't foresee this when the budget was crafted. It's really a budget housekeeping issue that I'm asking to defer to later in the year.
I got it, but a minute ago, what was mentioned was late fees with the city of Palaca, and that scares me. So I understand what you're asking. I don't have a problem with that personally, but I think in the future, for my edification, it would be better for me to see the numbers upfront, so I'm not asked to make a decision on the fly like this. But I understand what you're asking for.
One of the problems we do have is our billing cycle and the city's billing cycle are not one in the same. And by the time we send the bill to George Pacific, they process it, send it back to us, and in the meantime, we get another bill from the city because we're not on the same sequence on the billing. And we've been trying to rectify that with the city now for several years so we could be on the same cycle, to no avail, but that's kind of where we're at. And these water bills have, I think, basically a 20-day window. By the time you get the bill to pay it, so by the time we get it to George Pacific, they process and send it back. It's usually outside the 20-day window, but we get it. It's usually outside the 20-day window, but we get it in time, so we don't get late charges on it. So, it's just, it's a matter of timing right now, but we do have revenues coming in to offset the additional monies.
So, at the end of the day, we're net zero.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll be checked.
You'll track it, okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Ms. Papel, wouldn't it just be kind of easy today to do a budget amendment of 50,000 in revenue and 50,000 in expenses? And that would solve, and then you could come back? You're going to come back at a later date with a preferred number, so it's just more or less a budget housekeeping tool, that's all.
It's budget housekeeping, but I hate increasing a budget by some large amount, putting that money into operating expense.
I hear you, but-
Then it only ending up being 30, and we've put in 50, and some, you know, there's a lot of budgetary policing that has to be done, and it makes my budget cop job harder.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner?
While I had a lot of these same concerns during the week we got our agenda last Tuesday, so I called and tried to get some of these questions answered from Ms. Papel and from Mr. Tompkins before we came here today. So, I had a lot of the same questions that were asked here this morning, almost identical same questions, and they were answered, excuse me, they were answered before this meeting. So, I personally don't have any problem because of not knowing the amount of overcharges going to be, or not knowing the amount of revenue. I think it would be more damaging, Commissioner, if we just tried to pick a number and put in there, and then we got to come back and do another budget amendment later on, where if we just allow them to overspend this line item, then whenever they come back with a budget amendment, it will be an exact budget amendment with the revenue to offset it at that time, instead of doing two or three budget amendments. So, that's just my two cents, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Just to make it clear, it's more beneficial to me and the public if this is put out for our consumption at the same time. I understand what Mr. Turner is saying, and it would be easy for me to pick the phone and to call you up. The problem is, it doesn't advise the public, and this is their business that we're doing. So, in the future, I think, just a real quick synopsis on why we are where we are, but as far as three years trying to get this straight out of the city, I think we should try to work through that a little bit quicker. There's got to be a resolution. If nothing else, this year, we could overspend, budget the overspending, start paying our bills on time, and not have to worry about paying late. What do the late fees run?
I don't know, and hopefully, we haven't incurred any late fees. I've done everything that I can do to assist Press's staff to make sure there are no late fees.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the overspend of line item budgeted by 50,000, and anticipating a budget resolution for unanticipated revenues and relative expenses to be brought forward at a later fiscal, I mean, later date in this fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item C passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Press, and thank you, Stacy. Okay, next item, Agenda Item G, Sheriff authorizations for installation of fiber, fiber optic cable along property on Griffin Boulevard in Palatka.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that one, if you don't mind. This is a request from the Sheriff's Office to input new cable, fiber optic cable, out to the Sheriff's Office and jail. The property that the cabling will be going through, it's the Port Authority property, and so, we need permission here today. We're seeking approval to allow the Sheriff's Office access of the trenchy for the new fiber optic to go out to the jail and to the Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Rawls?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Rawls, and a second by Commissioner Turner. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have.
Okay.
One comment.
Commissioner Goddard?
Where this is going to go is not going to affect anything of where we're trying to put the new animal shelter.
I don't believe so, sir. No, sir.
Okay, I just didn't know where the location of it was.
Sheriff Deloach?
I can speak to that as best I can. To my knowledge, it will not impact the location of the new animal shelter. This is my understanding, the cabling will follow some pre-existing routes where some of that cabling was installed previously, but in addition, this will also give us the ability to, or work towards closing the loop between the Emergency Operations Center, the Sheriff's Office, and County IT and the county offices here. So, it'll also result in a pretty substantial savings overall.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I don't see where it would, Commissioner. I know where the other fiber optic cable, existing fiber optic cable runs now. It's across the street from where this one is going to run. I know it because I cut it one time. You'll believe me, I can tell you exactly where it is. Anyhow, I think that the new one's going to be in an entirely different location from where the old one was, looking at the plans from where it's going.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while the sheriff is at the podium, and for your edification, just so there's no confusion, you'll see the second part of this as your consent Agenda Item P, because the Sheriff's Office and jail is a county-owned facility, so that's why it's on there twice, so there's no confusion.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sheriff Deloach, before you sit down, I noticed that you took a little longer to get up, maybe from an injury from the FBI Academy, or your former athletic days. I'm sure you were a rodeo person, or if it was because you just had your-
My most recent milestone birthday.
Your fortieth birthday. So, if we could wish Sheriff Deloach a happy fortieth birthday.
Thank you.
Facebook is wonderful, isn't it?
I think he can still run you down, though.
Oh, I'm sure. Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, I believe, and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, pass, de-passes. Okay, any other business to come before the Port Authority? Okay, I adjourn the Port Authority, and I'd like to reconvene the regular Board of County Commission meeting, and the commissioner's going to request a three-minute recess at this time.
About three minutes and 20 seconds.
I'd like to re-cabine our regular meeting.
Number three.
Okay, we'll move to item six, public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters of attention to the board. It is not reasonable to expect the board that will engage in debate or deliberation on matters in which the board had no previous information. We'd like you to fill out a public comment card there at either side of the entry or the exit of this building. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start with Ms. Judith York. If you'll come forward and please state your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone.
Judith York, I live at 142 Drayton Island Road, Georgetown. I'm speaking on item K, that's your agenda, to vote for resolution to include the road and map under prescriptive easement. I've sent Mr. Pickens and Stacy Manning my objection to the wording of that document. There's a declaration saying that they have no previous knowledge of who's built the road. I've provided numerous documentation and statutory law that in 1960, there were two resolutions submitted by that board and accepted. And during that time, one of the resolution even clearly states that the island residents were donating limestone and other materials. The county was taking responsibility to build that road for them. And Mr. Cole, at that time, also provided asphalt to build a portion of, that affected his problem, property to have asphalt so that he could fly in. That's how that happened. As many of you already know, this controversy, we presented it to you last year. We had a great workshop. You all agreed. Press Tompkins started it by saying that it was not a public road, it was a private road. Then that's where all this research started coming. You have to remember, you also received a grant from the federal government and spent those federal funds stating that it was a county road. You have supportive resolution by that board 59 years ago, which stands. And I understand you want to clarify where you don't have record by prescriptive easement, which would be fine. But I, there's a new right-of-way that is recorded that actually was my property back in 1960. And it was generated by a right-of-way agent of Putnam County. So there's probably numerous more that are there to fill. And I know we want to move forward on this and we want to accept the map. But when we were doing that survey for that map, we were all so told the islanders were going to review it. And Lee Douse, who is a professional engineer, has been communicating with Press Tompkins, has asked to see that map. He was kind of trying to coordinate the islanders so that you don't get bombarded. And he's helped tremendously because of his experience and his knowledge. We have yet to see that map, which I think we're entitled to see before it is accepted. And we don't have a problem with you titling it prescriptive easement, but at the same time, there are right-of-way deeds recorded. And this resolution needs to have an affirmation that their map is going back to the previous resolutions, so that you have a complete title and not just saying that the whole road's prescriptive at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith.
Can I ask you, go ahead, you're quick.
Commissioner Rawls.
I wasn't here last year when this was brought up, but you're saying that, it sounds to me like there's a disagreement with what was discussed last year and what's being proposed today?
Technically, yes, yes. We did have some grading done. A lot of this started because of the federal grant on the ferry landings. That's how it all started tumbling. We had Hurricane Irma. We had tremendous amount of destruction on the road. We had FEMA, we had FEMA agents come in for rescue. We were told we had clay electric restore us. We had, we were told FEMA would come in for cleanup crews. That never occurred. We still have tremendous flooding to roads. And they, we never had our ditches cleared. We were class one. And we had a portion of the road that was paved that was designated as class two that never really got taken care of. We've had disagreements of how much time they've come and done work on it. Well, we had part of it was down because of the ferry landings. So it just goes on and on. And I just, I'm just asking then, at this point, there's so much still, there's so much controversy still. And to just clarify and put this to bed, I think this, we're rushing forward for an agreement to accept all this. We weren't allowed to even sit down with all of you and see this. And we were trying to do it with Lee Douse and Press Tompkins, and that did not occur. So I'm just asking, if it's delayed two more weeks, so be it. It doesn't matter at this point. We are all going through the mud piles. If it's delayed four weeks, it doesn't matter. Just as long as, when those rains come by June and we have hurricane season again, I need something done. I take care of two old men. And I have to go through that water every single day. Thank you.
I did get your emails and I really appreciate your effort. It was, everything that you sent was very thorough.
Thank you.
The deeds and all the resolution, that was pretty impressive.
Part of my job, previous career, I was part of risk management, people's gas. I was records custodian. I was legal defense, you know, paralegal certification, and I did mediations. My job was to make sure the i's were dotted, the t's are crossed, and that my CO, John Brapson, didn't have to answer something that wasn't disclosed.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Ms. Frances Vaughn.
And I don't know what I can add to what Judith already said, but I will say I've been a resident, or I've owned property on Drayton Island since 1980. I have five acre parcel right there by the ferry landing. I also have another 40 acre parcel further down, and another eight acre parcel that's way down, like three miles down the county road. Now, when we, when I was first introduced to the island, I was told and the county accepted that it was a three mile county road. And now, all of a sudden, you know, it's just over the years, it's just deteriorated and deteriorated to the point where it's, we hardly have any services there. I mean, we haven't seen any kind of road maintenance in years. And it's really pathetic. I mean, Drayton Island could be the crown jewel of Putnam County, but we just, you know, we just don't want to just be cast aside. You know, we really do need services there. And, you know, I think Judith brought forth a lot of very interesting points that we do need to table this and give it some more consideration. I didn't know about this meeting until last night, so I wasn't prepared. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harvey.
Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn, if you'll come back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You told me this morning that your concern was making sure that the entire three mile road was incorporated in this resolution because you were concerned that someone could possibly fence you off?
Well, yes.
And that happens throughout our county.
Yes, I've actually have been. The eight acre parcel that's on the south end, I was actually, I was gated off from accessing that property. And the issue kind of went away, but I'm afraid that it could resurface again. I'm not sure if it will, but I'm afraid I'm going to get blocked off from the eight acres. Now, I did just recently get it surveyed, but I haven't got a hard copy of it yet. They were there on the island and they surveyed the property. So I'm just kind of waiting for my survey. I don't know what kind of light that's going to bring, but possibly, you know, be something of consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay.
April Kirkendall.
I'm April Kirkendall and I live on Drayton Island, 119 Osprey Circle. During the invocation, Mr. Phillips was asking the Lord to help our elected officials to, because they were committing themselves to serve your people and their needs. I'm a taxpayer and a property owner and I live and work in Putnam County. I am a citizen of this county. And I take issue with the supposition that by asking for the most minimal of services, that I'm asking for things that I do not deserve as a citizen and taxpayer. I am not asking for a yellow brick road. I am asking for the knee-deep puddles and horrible road conditions that we've had since Hurricane Irma and the summer storms that we had this past year, just so we can drive down that road. It seems like today you may be attempting to push through a resolution that will allow you to legally restrict even the most minimal cleanup and repair of the drainage ditches, which is really important. And I request that you table today's resolution so that can be drafted to be a little bit more accurate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Baxley.
My name is Ken Baxley. I live on Drayton Island. I'm a full-time resident. I've been there for about 15 years. And I would like to ditto the other folks that have come up here to table this resolution. I think it's based on bad information. There's a lot of letters that were, a lot of documents that were found over the years. We found one, Judith found one, from Robert Merton that was dated October 30th, 2001. I'm just going to read you the last sentence. "The portion of the road is in the county's maintenance system." Talking about three quarters of the road, not the part that's paved. "Our records indicate that maintenance is limited to one to two times per year or as Hurricane Irma changed everything. We can't get service, we can't get clay electric in there sometimes. We can't get the garbage guys in there sometimes. Heaven help us if we got a fire. We pay the same taxes you guys pay. We appreciate any help you can give us. We chose to live down there based on a certain number of things. One is how beautiful it is down there. We were told that it was a number one class county road. This letter was happened to be written to the real estate agent that sold us the property. So we're under the understanding that it's a class one road that has been derelict in getting it maintained. So I wish you guys would table this and read those documents that Judith sent. If you don't have a copy of them, we can make sure each one of you have a copy. I would also personally like to invite any and all of you to come down there. I would be honored to take you around the island and show you, because I have a four-wheel-drive gator that I can get about three of you at a time in. But if you haven't been down there, you're going to see a beautiful place that has a very crappy road. And we really need your help. And what y'all did yesterday, or what not y'all, someone came down there with a box that gets dragged behind the tractor to try to help level out the road. The intent was good, but it rained this morning and you can't tell it's even been there. And it didn't rain that hard. If you ride down the road right now, the gentleman driving the tractor only tried to level out places where there weren't any potholes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baxley. Michael King. Good morning.
Michael King, 124 Midwell Circle, Drayton Island. I'd just like to associate myself with the remarks of the prior speakers. And I also want to thank you for allowing me to speak. And I want to commend especially Mr. Goddard, Chairman Pickens, and Mr. Harvey, because they have been on the island and have experienced what we're talking about. I just have one question. This particular item, in light of the information that's been provided by Judith York, has this resolution been examined for legal sufficiency by legal counsel?
Commissioner Strager, do you want to answer that? And we're not going to get into a debate on this, but I want to answer this question because I know legal counsel has looked this thing over.
Yeah, I won't speak.
For the last six months.
Yes, sir. You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, but I'm sure that our county attorney has looked at it. And so if there's anything that new comes to light here today, we'll be more than happy to look at it.
Okay.
I'm really sorry. I'm very, very hard of hearing. So I guess it's on the record. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, you're welcome. I'm sorry, I'll speak up for you. I apologize.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls.
Sir.
Mr. King.
Are you going to be around during the consent agenda?
I'm sorry.
Will you be here during the consent agenda? Will you be here during the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, David Birch.
David Birch, 113 Airport Farms Road. I just come before the board. Good morning. To ask for some assistance, some dirt for the Blueberry Festival. We've had so much rain and we changed our route last year. It worked out really well for us. It took a lot of safety hazards out of getting the entertainers in and asking for that. And also, the, I don't know what agency does the grass at the firehouse and the community center, but, you know, take some pride in maybe weed eat our ditches that haven't been weed eaten in about eight months. I noticed today, first time, someone was working at the community center and I actually had to walk down there to see what was going on. They were cutting some trees and limbs off the building, which is a great thing. There's several things in my district, which is Boswick number two, I guess would be the district. For instance, Tri-Cell Road, the bridge is collapsing. So the county's come out, put signs across it, blocked it off. And before, you know, soon as they leave, the residents come out and remove that. So being a volunteer in the fire department, we sit down and review roads. There's certain roads that we will not take a truck down because they're not safe. So just asking for somebody with the county to make contact with me. And I'd be glad to show them around and address some of the issues. Really, that's all I had. Mike, I talked to you. I just retired last night from being the president of the BCAI. It's Mike now, so you'll be talking to him as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, Press, could you get with him about some of those concerns, I guess? Angie, does some of the concerns fall under park and recreation?
Yes, sir, that if we get a list every year when something over at Boston, we go to that and get some of the questions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Strager.
Mr. Chairman, what we'll do is, we'll schedule some time to go out and do a site visit, me, Mr. Tompkins, and Ms. Wishenett. And we'll get out there and take a look and see what we need to do to get the facility up to speed so we can host another wonderful festival out there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Rawls.
If I could please, being on that invite, for obvious reasons, I was here last night as well and I looked at the ditches on my way out and they've, they definitely need to have some attention paid. It's a pretty good revenue driver for the Boswick Community Association and just for the community of Boswick. And real quick to address Top-Sell, I'd already talked to Mr. Tompkins about that. The issue is actually on this, on the other side of the road, on West River Road. And he said that he would be getting on that. But it, there's definitely some maintenance that needs to be performed before we lose part of West River Road as well. So thank you.
Mr. Jim. Mr. Harvey.
When is the Blueberry Festival, Mr. Birch? Do you can?
27.
April 27?
Yes.
Okay. That's a great time out there, so.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Mike Knoll.
Mike Knoll, 164 West Harbor Drive. As Chief Birch said, I'm the incoming president for the Boswick Community Association. Appreciate Commissioner Rawls showing us support, coming out to the meetings. I would like to invite all y'all to come out to the meetings. We meet every second Monday of the month at 7:00 PM. Also, I'd like to thank you all for supporting our local Boswick library. We finally have a new manager starting in a few weeks. It's been a long time since we've had a manager out there at the library. My wife's a teacher at St. John's Christian School and we bus about 40 kids up there every Friday to utilize the library and we certainly appreciate, appreciate that support. And the last item I wanted to ask is for y'all to consider moving your meeting times to late afternoon or evening so that the public can have an easier opportunity to attend the meetings without missing work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls.
Mike, thank you for your comments. I, for one, am in favor of evening and late afternoon meetings. So what I would encourage you to do is try to get some more of the constituents to come out and voice their, make their voice behold or send through email. Social media's always a good thing as well.
All right.
But thank you very much, your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Mr. Douglas Hayes. Good morning.
I'm here to address a suggestion in regards.
You state your name and address.
My name's Douglas Hayes, 216 Huron Avenue.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a suggestion in regards to animal control. I've discovered that the, I guess who's in charge, you're bouncing it from building and planning to the sheriff's office. It's been traditional back and forth. It's sort of like a redhead stepchild. But if you look at the funding process, you have a tax, you have a fund, you have a department. I'd like to offer a suggestion that animal control be separate as a department. With the dog tags, that is a tax revenue. I don't know if there's any accountability of how much money and, but it might help with the funding and the next part or possible phase of where it could be turned over to a nonprofit organization. That pulls it out of the loop of other people being in charge and not necessarily being to where it's just the redhead stepchild. I think it would be better for the people because there'll be more disclosure in regards to where the monies are coming and going. It's hearsay that do not donate money to animal control. Donate hard goods because the money goes straight to the general fund. Whether that's correct or not, I don't know. It's simply hearsay. The other thing is, I decided to apply for supervisor of animal control, so I request your endorsement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Ronald Moore. Good morning.
My name is Ronald Moore. I live at 220 Ash Street, Hawthorne, Florida. I live at Lake Owana subdivision. We've been trying to get our streets paved for some time. I'm one of the, probably the oldest person in there, still in there, that owns. I'm one of the, probably the oldest person in there, still in there, that owns property. I've owned property since 1968. And I have 11 lots. I have streets, lots on both streets. And the grader you have now is cutting ditches in front of my garage. I can't get a car in there until I went out and leveled it down myself so I could get in. On the back street, ain't no way you can get in and out of it because the way is washed out. The grader we had before, we had him to bring dirt in, rocks and stuff, and put in there. And he said, "I can't get you all of it right now, but I'll get you one at a time, one load at a time." So he did. He had it fixed up pretty good until this bad wash come out. And the school buses couldn't even let the kids off, off in the school buses. And, you know, we've been trying to get things done because water washes the sand off in the hill down in the ditch. And then you guys got to come out and take the water or take the sand out of the ditch and haul it off. And if we'd pave the roads and take concrete and put in the ditch lines, you wouldn't have that washing. So I'm asking for some help in our area and also tree trimming. You send someone out there and they just hit a lick on a promising, that's about it. They don't cut it down like it should be. Last time it really got a good trimming was Bob Brown is my neighbor. And me and him got a pickup truck and a 12-foot ladder, got up in it and took a chainsaw and sawed it all off. So we sawed it off about 16-foot high. It should be at least 14 feet. So, you know, I'm asking someone to come in there. And you've got another tree on 28, between 20 and 8, and Orange Avenue is leaning down and it's going to fall down one of these days. I don't know if you are over that or not. I guess you are. I'm not sure. But that needs to be looked at also. And on the corner of Ash and Orange, last time that was trimmed, school bus was rubbing it from one end to the other. So my brother had a 53-foot van, 13-6 high. He pulled underneath it and I went and got a chainsaw. We chainsaw up high as I could reach for 53 feet through there. Now, school bus don't have no worries. And it hasn't been trimmed since, as I know of. But it don't need to be trimmed. But Orange Avenue needs to be trimmed again before somebody hits something, tears something up, especially a motorhome or a semi or whatever, you know, something high that's going down through there. But we're asking for help. And I've got a couple of page letter I'd like to submit to y'all and let you look at it. Okay. All right, I'll give it to you. And I'd like to know who my commissioner is. Okay, buddy. I'm glad to meet you, buddy. And that's about it.
Okay. All right, sir. Thank you. Press, you make note of that, I guess? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could real quick-
Commissioner Rawls.
Sir, we're all your commissioners. We're all your commissioners. We're, and-
Sir.
Is there any chance that this could be brought up for the next transportation meeting? It sounds like-
I don't mind it, Mr. Chairman. I don't mind at all, but I think we need to at least let press have a chance to work on it before we carry it straight there. If it becomes an issue, we're all, I'm all for it.
Okay. I was assuming this has been ongoing.
Let him give it a shot. No, this is a new one to me. I've never heard of this one before. So I think we need to let our staff give it a shot and see if he can do something about it. If not-
Sure appreciate it. Anything. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Harvey.
Just a little history of this area. V. Yarrington, years ago, might bring some knowledge to you, but she was part of the Silver-haired legislator. Remember that, under Sid Martins, when he was our state legislator? So that goes back a long way. So I'm very familiar with your area. But Ms. Lobenheimer still lives out there in your area, if I'm not mistaken. So Ellen, does she move? Yeah. Okay. But yeah, that goes back a long way, probably 35 years ago when all that was going on. So just give you a little history of that area.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Ma'am, if you want to make a comment, if you'll come to the podium, please.
My uncle started this-
If you'll please state your-
I'm Marjorie Maynard. I live on Ash Street.
Thank you, just for the record.
My uncle started this subdivision years ago. I've lived there 48 years, in one spot, one street. I've watched a lot of old people come and go. There's older people now just beside me, lung cancer. You can't back out of your driveway. You get in a ditch. You can't, it's just, you'd have to come and see it to really believe it sometimes. Mr. Moore, all these are my neighbors. It's not a hard, hard job to fix our streets. It's not. Even Orange Avenue, we used to have stripes down the middle. There was an accident for one time. Well, I don't, I don't see the middle of the street. No, I wasn't in the middle of the street. If we had the stripes back, they would know. Things like, just simple things like that. The electric lines are on trees. The trees are need trimming, just like Mr. Moore said. It's just small things that need to be done for us. We are in West Putnam. We seem to be sometimes ignored. We really do. And I don't think it's right we pay taxes like everybody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard.
I want to just go ahead and comment on this because we each have a district. Each commissioner has a district, but we are at large. So in your, in this instance, for an example, if you were to go to Public Works and request service done, because we've got a lot of bad roads. I'm out there on those roads constantly. I drive a Jeep purposely for that reason. They're bad. I've said it over and over. All dirt roads are bad and some are even worse. They're just bad. But if you'll contact Public Works and you don't get a response, by all means, contact me. If you don't get a response, you can contact any one of the commissioners. You can contact our office. But we are all wanting to be aware of the repairs that need to be get done. We just honestly don't always know what needs to be done. But I know that they are trying. I know I keep him busy. I'm sure all the other commissioners keep him busy. But honestly, just let them know. If they don't take care of it, let me know. If I'm not doing my job, you let one of these guys know. But I guarantee you, I will go out, I will look at it, and I will see what I can get done. He hears from me regular. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Ma'am, if you want to make a comment, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good morning. I'm Marlene Price. I live at 108 Elm Street in Lake Owana Gardens. Two years ago, I became, came to all the commissioners and had our community so we could write our golf carts. We have signs up at the streets. And the roads are so bad out there that a lot of us are not writing our golf carts because it's just too hard. And I'm the type of person, I like to get out on the golf cart, drive around to see if anybody has trouble, if anybody needs anything, and check on people. And some of the roads are really, really bad to write a golf cart on. So might want to keep that in mind, too. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll just reiterate what Commissioner Goddard was saying. This is a county-wide problem. We've gone from, you know, a number of years in a drought period to seeing rain like I haven't seen it since I was in high school, which is 40 years ago. And it's taken the toll on the dirt roads and our drainage systems. And I do believe Press, Tompkins, and Public Works are doing the best job that you can. But make us aware. You can, I see you shaking your head. Well, I feel that they're doing a good job as they can. You can reach any commissioner by going on the internet. Like if you want to reach me, it's bill.pickens@putnam-fl.com. And that will come to me. It'll be the same with buddy.goddard. So you can reach any of the staff members to bring it to our attention. Okay? Any other comments? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting and we'll move to our consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items that you wish to pull from the agenda? We'll move, okay, we'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
I have G, H, and K.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard.
That's, that's going to be fine with me.
You want to pull any or?
No.
Okay. You pulled them all? Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Add to that D, N, and O.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
They've already been pulled, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And also the ones that I'm interested in have been pulled also. I would like to go ahead and vote on the remaining of the consent agenda. I'll probably need some help with-
Mr. Chairman, I can do that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass consent agenda items A, B, C, E, F, I, J, L, M, and P.
Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion on the floor by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Yeah, that wasn't so hard.
It was. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll start in alphabetical order. Commissioner Harvey, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item D, just for full disclosure purposes, this is our Rotary Club of Inilockin Lake area. And I just wanted the public to know that I actually signed this as the president of the Rotary Club. So I just want a full disclosure on that for you. Your privilege too, Mr. Attorney, so you would have that. So that's all.
Okay, I would like to make a comment on item D. And there are two different organizations that are going to take care of the boat ramps, correct?
Yes.
And I just didn't have time, but I was going to buy you a shovel and a rake and a hoe and bring it to you because I know if for some reason the club can't do it as a club, that you'll personally take care of that boat ramp.
I have those items available to me all the time, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval on item D.
Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner and a second by Commissioner Harvey. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Item D moves forward. Larry, you want to take the?
Item-
You want to take the rest?
My?
The one that- I think Commissioner Rawls.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll go ahead with item G. Commissioner Rawls.
I just basically had a question. It says in here that this was budgeted. I'm just not sure why we're looking at increasing this.
Mr. Chairman, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
That request. I'll have Mr. Reynolds.
Commissioner, Administrator Suggs.
I'll have Mr. Reynolds address the question.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Rawls. What we did within the tourist development fund is when we were preparing the budget in the summer of last year, we did not know whether the FLW event was going to occur or the Bass Master Elite event was going to occur. So when we were preparing the budget, we created three different reserve categories, one of which being a large project category. And we set aside this money for these projects in case they were secured. And now that they have been, we need to move those expenditures out of the reserve line and into the actual expenditure line to cover those reserves.
This is just housekeeping?
It's just housekeeping, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item G. Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion on item G by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Rawls. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item G moves forward. Commissioner Rawls, items H.
So I'm assuming that everybody got the same letter I got yesterday requesting that this be pulled from the consent agenda. I think that we should probably move this to a workshop for further discussion and possible action. But it looks like we're going to miss an opportunity to save quite a bit of money. And I'm really perplexed as to how, if I understand the letter correctly, the most responsive bidder was not awarded the contract or was not given a letter of intent. And we're leaving $173,000 on the table potentially. So I just want to have some conversation about that and see how that benefits the public.
Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners on item H? Okay. Administrator Suggs.
Yes, sir. There's been a lot of conversation with staff on this item itself. And I believe staff is prepared to answer whatever questions there may be here this morning. This is a very time-sensitive issue. We've got appropriation from the state that we're under a deadline to finish a project or lose our appropriation. Again, I believe the, the letter was addressed by our general services director and response was directed back yesterday on the letter. So I believe that the concerns and issues that were brought forward did not, in our terms, merit a reason to pull the consent agenda item or not award the bid as it is today.
Okay.
If I could, so-
Commissioner Rawls.
During the bid process, if there was any savings, would that be realized by the taxpayers or would that just go straight back to the state?
The, no, the project itself is funded at $790,000 and $232,000, I believe it is. So the, any savings within that scope of that project would go back to the state if we didn't use the appropriations. I think the concern is what are the costs moving forward? And I think that's where the concerns and questions came from. I believe it had to do, I would like to ask Ms. Juliana if she could join me in conversation. I believe it had to do with the future maintenance agreements is where the biggest issue came from. And so Ms. Juliana is our general services director who went through the process and she's certainly capable of answering any questions that I can't this morning.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Juliana, before you get started, Commissioner Turner has a comment.
So basically, and if this is what you're fixing to say, I apologize. But so basically, we did this as a continuing services contract with a bid selection committee that went out and selected the contractor. So it wasn't a bid. It was done through a selection committee, correct? Okay, well, okay, yeah, I'll wait.
Ms. Juliana, pull the microphone to you.
Julie, please.
I apologize. Just for your clarification on that, that item for housekeeping. So continuing contracts are something that were not brought into this particular issue. When you issue competitive solicitations, the state gives us several options in order to do so on services or commodities like these. You can do a bid for the purpose of just buying a trinket. And the trinket, there's no question about the trinket you're going to buy and the low cost wins. The process that we went through was an RFP, which is a request for proposal. Requests for proposals are appropriate when there's value added to the county to make the best choice, where price is certainly a consideration, but not the ending answer. And this process was done via an RFP. An evaluation team consisting of members of the sheriff's office, EMS, and 911 were assembled to be your scoring team, as well as the county engaged a consultant whose expertise is in soliciting and evaluating the services for which the county was requesting. So an RFP was done, not a continuing contract, and it was a true cycle that went from start to finish. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Turner?
Commissioner Turner has the floor.
Yeah, I think it came close. So basically, we had the review committee is what we did. And the review committee came up with them as the best contractor to fit what we were asking them to do.
That's correct. The best value to the county.
So even though someone else offered a something that was less money, they were, that was taken into consideration at that committee meeting. And they still decided that they did not meet the county's best interest that the number one contractor did. Is that correct?
Well, the only part of that that is misleading is the letter that was sent to you, that was sent to me yesterday and forwarded on has some, has some implications that have been misled to you all. So let me back up and say that the top-ranked firm is the lowest overall cost to the county by over a half a million dollars to include value-added propositions that were not required by the county in our RFP, but that they included. And in your agenda letter that you received as part of the package, the- the consultant assessed what he believed the list values of those extra items that we didn't say we wanted upfront, but that the top-ranked proposer did include. So, item one is, when the evaluation committee met, they reviewed those costs that were submitted in response to the RFP in full compliance to everything that was asked for. And the top-ranked firm on your list was actually ends up, oh, just over a half million dollars cheaper for total package than any other firm. What the letter insinuated yesterday was that they proposed an alternative. So, we could save money long-term if we went with an alternative proposal. So, think of it this way, and, and I'm gonna use a real simple analogy to make this easy. The county wrote an RFP to get a major league baseball field. The proposers proposed different proposals with costs in order to build you a major league baseball field. The best value, and also in this case cheapest option, was the top-ranked firm. What that letter said yesterday is, "But, we could build you a T-ball field for a lot cheaper version." But the county did not, that cheaper T-ball field does not meet the full compliance of the year's two-to-five warranty proposal, which was included as the county. In fact, the letter that was referenced starts with a proposal, page seven dot three, and I'm gonna read the first sentence to you. It says, "This cost-saving options," now remember, we didn't ask for a cost-saving option, and we also didn't entertain cost-saving options by any other vendor, which really precludes that evaluation committee from being able to score on it. But it says, "Motorola has provided a post-warranty maintenance cost proposal in full compliance to the RFP specifications. We are also providing the option for a more cost-effective approach." So, what they're saying is, "Here's an alternative to what you asked for. However, what you asked for is this other cost." And those were the pages before that last page.
Was that turned in at the time of the bid or after? At the time of the original proposal or after?
At the time of the original proposal.
Okay, but it, because it didn't meet the criteria of what you were asking for, it was not used by the selection committee?
That's correct.
So, basically, they said, "We want so much money for what you asked for, but if you let us redesign to this, which is cheaper, then it, you'll be, there would be a cost savings."
That's correct.
And so, the committee felt like they wanted to stay with the proposal which was offered by the number-one selection.
That's correct. The, the proposal, the, the, the committee couldn't address that alternative option for two reasons. One, the RFP was written in order to have a full service two-to-five-year plan. And two, the committee didn't allow any other vendor to solicit alternative proposals. So, there, so there wasn't an equal and fair opportunity for each of the vendors proposing if we even decided that maybe we could squeak by with a lesser alternative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll relinquish the floor.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I think most of my questions have been asked, Julie, but, um, but it seems to me like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the original, the bidder, the best bidder, added more value to what they were looking at. Was that correct? What we were, what we wanted?
That is correct.
Is it our policy then to tell the other bidders that, or they get an opportunity to come back and, and say, "But we could have offered those same things"? Do we do that?
Not in an RFP, um, in an, in an ITN solicitation, it's a different type of solicitation. So, yes, you could do that, but remember, the evaluation committee also did not score on those value-added items. It was scored strictly on compliance to the requirements in the RFP.
So, the RFP was scored apples to apples, and then anything?
That's correct. That's exactly what you're going for.
The caramel was added to it later on down the road.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's a good analogy as a baseball field.
I'm gonna throw the Cracker Jacks in here now. You said the sentence was in seven-point-three. I don't, I don't have, my seven-point-three says this left blank intentionally.
Wait, I'm sorry. Um, ask me your question again, 'cause I missed it, Commissioner Rawls.
You were reading from a, a paragraph.
Uh, seven, yes. Um, in the letter from yesterday, the, the page marked is actually seven-dash-five, and the, um, section heading, if you will, is seven-dot-three, and then the first sentence there, seven-dot-three-dot-one, customized post-warranty.
I'm getting there.
No problem.
So, there's a bid tabulation on page two of the letter. I guess it's, yeah, it's not the RFP. It's the actual letter. And highlighted, highlighted in blue, um, it says Motorola. They were graded a total of two-hundred-and-eight points, while Intertalk was one-hundred-and-thirty points, and Williams Communication was two-hundred-and-three.
Yes.
And the grading criteria was qualifications, experience, and references, um, point-by-point responses, uh, implement, uh, implementation schedule, project management, services, and price. So, everything from soup to nuts was reviewed. Are these tabulations correct, the two-oh-eight, one-thirty, and two-oh-three?
Well, no, sir, because what you're seeing there on that page two is that the, the, when they sent you the letter, they nullled out the ranking for cost, because the cost is what put them underneath the top-ranked firm, the cost of the actual proposal. So, the actual ranking sheet gave you, I'm gonna read you that, if you will.
Was there a bid tabulation sent out? It, it, do you have one with you that you could share with us that, that has?
Yes, yes, I do.
The tabulation completion?
I do.
So, I'm assuming that the numbers were flipped between Williams and Motorola?
Right, because once you assess the cost of the contract price proposal, Williams Communication ends with two-fifty-nine-point-one, and Motorola ends with two-fifty-five, and I'm gonna let you review that.
And this was sent to them? Because there, there was a?
It was given to the evaluation committee member, and it was also sent to Motorola per their request for their information. Um, it was also reviewed in that, um, workshop. And for your comfort level, um, the generally accepted way to score price in a, in an evaluation committee member, or committee team, as in this one, is to take a low and divide by high, and then give you the, the weight. And so, that was also provided to your evaluation committee as a starting ground for what the, you know, a fair way to score what your contract pricing is.
So, um, just for clarity, they, they did a public records request. What day did they do that? Because they, they said that, the way I read this, it sounds like they were insinuating that they were, the public records request acknowledgement or, um, answer was delayed for some reason.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's, um, and not true. The request came in Friday afternoon at four.
Which was what date?
Uh, February first. An acknowledgement of that request was sent back to them that afternoon, and all information, documents, files that they asked were assembled and returned back to them the following Thursday before three, probably. So, it took us three and a half days to give back everything that they had requested. And also of note for your information, an intent to award was issued on January thirty-first with a protest period per state statute of seventy-two hours, which actually gave a little bit of a bonus time, 'cause it fell over a weekend. So, they actually had five days to protest or, or file the intent, and, and there was not one word of an intent to protest on this item.
Just in, in the future, for my application at least, it would be nice to have all of that at one time, because what I got, when I, when I first read this, it looks like we're being set up for a lawsuit. And what you're saying, it looks like we'll be defended, um, easily. Um, I just wanna make sure that, um, because if I take what they have on face value, they were the most responsive, lowest-priced bidder. Based on what you have from the thirty-first, they're not. So, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Be happy. She's so.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, any other questions, discussions on item H? Okay, what's the pleasure of this board?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Rawls.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Goddard. Any more discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item H passes. Thank you, Julie Young.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item K?
Back to Drayton Island.
Yeah. Again, Commissioner Rawls?
Um, I'm, I'm becoming nervous, uh, early on. Obviously, I'm, I'm not familiar with the, the issue out there. Public Works has taken the podium, so I assume they have something to say about this, but, uh, it, it, I, I guess what I would, um, propose is that we might wanna slow this down a little bit, um, until we can get some answers. It sounds like there might be some conflicting information, um, based on, um, what, what they're bringing in as far as documentation from the fifties or sixties, um, you know, when the, the deeds and resolutions that, that were sent to us yesterday. I personally haven't had time to even begin to digest this, so, um, I'm, you know, I don't wanna see us make a mistake and then, um, get the public mad at us because we did.
Okay, press before you start. Stacy Manning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I can address a lot of those, um, questions and issues raised, um, by the public earlier. The, let me start with the, the direction that we're going as far as establishing the maintenance map. Is something that, that has been discussed, um, for many months at length in numerous workshops, um, with you all. And the reason why we were going this direction is because what, what is being requested on this item, and, and this is a, a technical aspect, what is being requested on this item isn't, does not, does not establish ownership in the county. What this item does is it, it establishes prima facie evidence of ownership that the county already claims. And it does that, um, through a statutory mechanism that we currently have to work through. And that statutory mechanism basically says, you can file this maintenance map to establish prima facie evidence of what the county owns, and the county's ownership is based upon X number of years of maintenance. And that's why the survey was done, so they could establish the exact location of the road as it has been maintained, or that we can prove that it has been maintained for that statutory time period. The item itself and the resolution is, is, is drafted, it is legally sufficient to establish that prima facie evidence, again, as is consistent with what is required by the, the Florida statutes. This, what, what's being requested today does not affect any other, um, records that are, that are, um, of record. I know that was brought up. Those are still there. They still exist, um, recorded deeds or easements, or private easements that may exist in, in, in individuals' changes of titles for other portions of the road. That, this will not affect that. This is just to establish prima facie evidence of what the county is claiming by maintenance. And, and to get to the, kind of, the meat of the, um, issues, the, um, the thing's going back to nineteen sixty, um, nineteen eighty-one, nineteen ninety-seven. This, this has been reviewed over and over and over and over for many years, um, by the previous county attorney. I reviewed it, um, and in nineteen ninety-seven, the county commission, um, paid for a title opinion to be done on that road, and, um.
Stacy, what year was that?
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, okay.
Um, and, and that, and the title company looked at everything of record and all of these documents. And, um, as I indicated, um, to, um, Ms., it was actually to Daniel Vaughn in an email and, and Ms. York, back in September of twenty eighteen, um, and I let them know at that time, and I'll just kind of read a couple of things from that, that is, as previously advised, "When extensively researched and addressed to Mr. Vaughn back in nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-six, and nineteen ninety-eight, although there may be private easement rights at issue, which are not county matters, this portion of Drayton Island Road cannot be lawfully established to be a county road based upon the nineteen sixty coal deed, which was really the, the best option out there, the most, the best evidence that we could find." And there was a number of reasons for that. There was not a proper legal description prepared at the time. That was a condition precedent to, to recording of that deed. It eventually was recorded, but that still hadn't happened, um, and it was not, uh, therefore authorized by the, the grantor. There was no evidence that the deed was ever accepted by the Board of County Commissioners. There is a nineteen eighty-one Beacon Landing plat in Map Book Six, page twenty-one, which designated, um, at least a portion of that road to be a private road, to be owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association of Beacon Landing. And, um, and again, in the nineteen ninety-seven title opinion from Placa Abstract confirmed the unlikelihood that the county would prevail in any attempt to classify that portion of the road as a county road, um, based upon those historic documents. Therefore, um, the decision was made, um, after a lot of research and, and discussion and meetings, that we could, we could establish maintenance over the statutory period of time, that we could file the maintenance map to evidence ownership in that regard. So, that's how we got to where we're at, um, today.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rawls, you still have the floor?
The, is the map available?
The maintenance map?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, sir. It was, um, I believe it was attached as part of the backup.
I'm sorry, I didn't. I didn't get it.
I believe it, we had, we gave a reduced copy to be distributed.
I didn't get it.
Okay.
I didn't hear, I don't hear. I mean, they're large, there they are, survey sheets, numerous survey sheets.
It was, it was mentioned earlier, um, I believe by Ms. York, that they had requested copies done prior to this coming up, so they could look at it. Um, I don't know that anybody's prepared, um, without having a?
I'm trying to check on that now. I was trying to call my, our county surveyor. I know we had a contract surveyor do this, a third-party surveyor. I believe he was instructed to send a copy to Mr. Doris, but I don't know if he had the software to open it or not, because this was done in AutoCAD type of, of software.
They'll just need to be converted PDF and sent over.
Uh, well, that's what I told him to, but anyway, I, I am checking on that now, but I'm fairly sure we did send it. If we didn't, I, I apologize, but, one, I wanted to follow up this. Why we decided to do the maintenance map, if you look at all the old plats that we, we reconstructed all the way back to the early eighteen hundreds, they all showed Drayton Island Road in bits and pieces. What we found out was the actual road itself was not in those platted rights of way. It meandered onto private lots and all, so that was the reason that we didn't, as Mr. Manning said, we discussed it at length in several meetings. This was the mechanism that we could establish our ownership or maintenance of where the road physically is on the ground. And, and as an example of that, if you look at the old plats, the landing itself by plat is another hundred-and-sixty-eight feet to the north. It is not where it is physically located today, so that was another reason why doing this maintenance map, we were able to capture what actually is being used as the roadway. And that's what this map represents today.
I just, for me personally, I, I don't have enough information to vote this up, um, based on what I've, I've heard and seen today. I think this may need to come back to a transportation workshop and maybe have an overlay that shows what is and what should be, um, and maybe discuss how we get forward from there, but, um, I personally would not be able to vote for this today. I yield the floor.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Well, I understand, Commissioner Rawls, um, this is pretty new to him. It's not new to the other, to us others. We've, uh, met on many, many occasions about this, and I don't, uh, I don't see where it would harm a thing to put this off a couple of weeks or whatever, and let the people of Drayton Island, if they want to go in there and look some more, do some overview, or whatever the case may. or do some overview or whatever the case may be. So I'm actually wishing, I'm actually would offer a motion that we, would it be better to table this to the next meeting or just bring it back up as a, or have y'all withdraw it and bring it back as an intended item? How would you like it?
I think the best way to handle it would be to continue it to a meeting certain...
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll have to have extra time for re...
What's the date of the next commission meeting?
February 26th.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this item to the meeting on February 22nd.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, sorry.
That's great.
I'll second that.
Okay. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner to table this until the next county commission board meeting. Is that correct? The 26th?
Yes, sir. Under discussion.
Okay. We have a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. All right. Is there any discussion?
Here, sir.
All right. I'm going to go to Commissioner Harvey first. Commissioner Turner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I'm going to tell you this point-blank. Four and a half years I've listened to this road. Four and a half years. I went out there when I first got appointed. I went out there after I got elected. Guys, whatever we do, I want it to end on the 26th of this month. I want, I want, whatever we do, I want it to be finalized, so these people out there know what they got. We know what we got. And somebody doesn't come back four years from now and try to dig up that old horse, put skin on it again, and ride the thing. I want it over with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner?
I would just like to request that in the next two weeks that maybe you could have the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Rawls and try to bring him up to speed. I understand his, I mean, this has gone on a long time with everybody, and he's fairly new here. Maybe you could bring him up to date.
Be glad to.
Where in two weeks, we can try to move this thing forward. I know it's got to be frustrating for the residents. It becomes frustrating to some of the commissioners. We would like to try to do something to move this in a positive direction. I'm sure that Mr. Pickens would probably agree with it being in his district. So maybe we could get this thing where everybody's up to speed in two weeks and been told what they need to do, and we can start there and move it forward.
Be glad to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Press, what I'd like for you to do is let's go ahead and reach out to the gentleman who has been corresponding back and forth with us, I believe it's Lee. Let's go ahead and see if we can schedule a meeting with them in the next few days. If we have the survey on, that's digitized, let's sit down and hold a meeting, and let's don't let this get behind us or put us behind for the 26th. Let's just go ahead and schedule a meeting. You let me know when, and we'll be there.
As soon as we can check schedules, we'll get it scheduled.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah. Commissioner Rawls?
Mr. Manning, you started talking about prima facie evidence that the county has to maintain the roads, I believe. Does past practice prevail in a situation like this?
Yes. It establishes prima facie evidence of ownership based upon the past maintenance that the county has done.
If we have done past maintenance, do we own it? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, for that period of time, yes. And it depends on, there are various, depending on who built the road, if you know who built the road, constructed it initially. So there's a certain number of years in one instance or a certain number of years in another. In this instance, we're able to say we've done it for at least seven years, therefore we meet the statutory criteria to establish ownership.
So are you saying that we have established ownership?
Yes.
Okay. Because what keeps rewinding in my head is the comment made about firing EMS, not having access, life safety issues. Does that fall on us? Is that our responsibility if something happens?
Well, that, like any other citizen within the county, this doesn't have, this has no effect on that.
You're saying the resolution doesn't have any effect on that?
Correct.
Does a resolution patently end the conversation about who owns the road? If it passes, we say we own the road? Or...
Well, it starts a, there's a timeframe then from which, when that happens, I'm not sure how many days, but somebody could object to that and, you know, state their basis for that objection. But yeah, it, once that time period runs and, you know, assuming there weren't that, then yes, then that ends the discussion. This is a county road from point A to point B, as indicated on that maintenance app and there's our maintenance map, and that's it.
Then the map will describe Class I, Class II, or other...
That happens, you know, that could change throughout the years. I mean, that's a decision, you know, that boards make based upon staff recommendations on how to treat the road. This just goes to ownership.
What does the map declare the roads? Because it sounds like it's more than one road, correct?
I believe we, I have to check. I believe we request it to be brought in as a Class II road.
So that's service, one requested as availability arises.
As requested, as needed.
And it's one, excuse me, it's one road?
It's one continuous road.
No, we'll get into that, but it's, and it shows that, but it's not the whole three miles.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a long story.
I guess we'll eat the horse one bite at a time.
There you go.
And we can bury it and then...
Well, if I could just add to that, there was, we had to do this based upon, as I said, having done maintenance, you know, for the statutory period of time, and being able to prove that and be able to back that up, that I can go into court and say, yes, here's my proof that this has happened. There are additional sections of this road that the county did not maintain. We cannot prove we maintained it. Now, we reached out to property owners along that section and said, would you be willing to consent to us taking that in as well? And some said yes, others said no. You can't prove it's yours. I am not going to consent to that. So we weren't able to go that far, and obviously, the indication, you know, we were getting was, you know, I will fight that certainly in court. So we did not feel that we had enough basis to be able to establish that and have a winning argument in a court of law for that section of the road, because we just don't have the documentation to be able to prove that we've maintained it for that period of time.
So will that be delineated on this map or survey?
At the end of the map.
At the very end of the map, we showed the end of maintenance limits. We ended our map at, I know you're not familiar with, but Beacon Circle. The remainder of the road, as Mr. Manning said, the residents said they did not want to, or they were going to challenge us for the maintenance of the remainder of the road, which I believe Stacy's only one or two property owners that, on the tail end of the road...
That were contesting it or that were wanting it to be added in?
No, that contested it.
Contest, yeah. There was, it was one individual that owns a number of properties, was another individual that owned a number of properties, that he said, yeah, I'm fine, but we couldn't get both sides of the road. So we weren't able to move forward with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Turner?
When you bring everybody up to speed on this, could you go back further than just this road? Only take about an extra 15 or 20 minutes to explain how we've worked on the landings, we're going to get the landings done, we bought them a new barge, we just, could you kind of go all the way through what's happened in the last year or two instead of just, we're going to work on the road also? I mean, let them know what's, I mean, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been spent on this, on the Drayton Island ferry and the different things within the last year, so we, so we don't leave a commissioner to think that we've just turned a blind eye to Drayton Island and we haven't done anything there, that we've actually spent hundreds of thousands of dollars there within the last year. So I'm not saying that we're going to walk away or do whatever, but I'm kind of like Commissioner Harvey. You know, at some point, we need to figure out what we're going to do and do it and get on, and get on with business here.
No, I was going to bring Commissioner Rawls up from everything we've done for the last two, three, four, five years on Drayton Island.
It shouldn't take but a few minutes, and then he'd have a better understanding of Drayton Island issue, maybe.
Okay. You have a comment? Okay. Thank you. I would like to make a comment along those lines. And I've been a commissioner since the start of my third year, and from day one, we've been working with the people on Drayton Island to try to improve the road, improve services. And it is my district. I see some of these people every day. Judith and April, they're in my store this last week. So, but I think you have to admit, and by all means, I'm not going back and criticizing any commissioner, any commission, because when I'm done, I'll be criticized for things I did or that I didn't do. But you have to admit that this new administration, this new county commissioners have worked with y'all, because, and some of this was in, the plans were started before I got elected or before these guys were here, some of these guys. But there is a new barge there. Both landings have been rebuilt with wood, with DOT money. It didn't really increase the capacity, but those things were getting pretty bad that you're scared to take your car across. There are plans in 2021, I believe, to redo both landings and concrete, which will increase the load capacity, so you can get the larger well-rigged trucks over there. I had somebody at church say, we can't get our big propane truck over there to them. When are you going to fix the landings? I said, 2021. Power trucks, well-drilling trucks over there, you know, to enhance y'all's quality of living over there. So we have the barge in place to be able to handle that, just because you have a landing that'll hold 70,000 pounds. You don't have a barge, what good is it? So we have a barge, okay? So these things will be taken care of, and by all means, I want to get this road right the first time. But whoever comes to the meeting, I guess if it's going to be Lee Downs and Judith or whoever it is, I don't think you need to bring 10 people, because we understand what y'all are looking for, I believe. But y'all have to be open-minded and understand that we have professionals in place that has done a tremendous amount of research and work to put a plan in place and pay $28,000 for a maintenance map. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we can take ownership of this road and maintain this to some level and give y'all some service. So I hope everybody understands that. And yes, I want to put this to bed also, but I want to put it to bed the right way. So I want to thank staff for everything you've done, Drayton Island people for the way you conducted yourselves, and we'll move this forward. And I believe this is the right thing, is to slow this thing down just a little bit and then make a final decision on the 26th and move forward, okay? All right, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, thank you.
I think I have the next item.
Oh, do you? Okay. Okay, no, okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item N on your agenda today, just for a really brief discussion. I know we get beat up in the community about what St. John's Avenue looks like, and we've dealt with this extensively, press, as you well know, and Mike, and we appreciate you. We've had joint meetings with the city of Palaca. We've floated ideas of helping them with water pipes, so we can get this road done. Unfortunately, that's not how government works sometimes, because what happened, and please correct me if I'm wrong for the listening audience and for people watching us, and for the record, then we had a hurricane come and flooded out down there. And then FEMA got involved. So now we're looking at FEMA funds to help us on that. But the board decided, we can't wait years and years for all this to come together. So are we going to put a little Band-Aid on this situation? Yes, we are. We're going to resurface this road to get some of the bumps and the, whatever they call them, duply-doo's out of it, because it's really a bad road. There is no doubt about it. But the major fix is coming years from now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Because I just, I really, you know, I got beat up again the other night. Well, you're just wasting taxpayer mon... We're not. We're trying to fix something. We wanted to fix it right the first time. We just can't possibly do it with FEMA, and we can't move that forward any further than that, right?
Just to expand on that for you, you're right. We've discussed this at length. We do have DOT funding to resurface this road. They realize the condition it was in also. We looked at this, like you said, after hurricane, we had substantial drainage and flooding problems. We tried working with the city. They have a very old water system in there, sewer system, which they are trying to rehabilitate also. It's just the timetables could not come together. But in order to do the major project, the drainage and everything, it's a multimillion-dollar project. I believe we're in now for some funding in excess of, Mike, I think around 3...
Two point six million.
Like you said, it is in the future, but we felt like, in talking to DOT, and they agreed to go ahead with the funding, to go ahead and get this road leveled and resurfaced and make it drivable, as it is one of our major access points to the hospital. So I'm not saying, I think it is a very good expenditure taxpayer dollars to do this, and we're still looking at two, three, maybe four years, as, you know, we know with FEMA and federal government, monies sometimes aren't exactly when they say they are, but you do eventually get them. So I think this is a very good expenditure to get that air, that road fixed the way it needs to be fixed. In the meantime, we're working on all the major drainage improvements, water and sewer improvements with the city. End of the day, we'll have a very good system out there.
Thank you. And one last thing, and I'm sure you did this when you, because you're the engineers and you're the administration, be very cognizant of the fact of how that road is used during the daytime for emergency services and people needing to get to their medical facilities down that road, you know? So if there's any leeway we could do or we can, I know it's kind of difficult, but if we can work around some of those schedules...
We're talking to the contractor now, possibly doing a lot of this work at night, when it's not, because we understand the traffic volumes on that. So I think that, that's why, you know, to get it done, because we don't want to disrupt half the world out there, because we realize the traffic and the volume and the importance of that road.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if there's no future, just more discussions on that?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move item N as an approved item.
I'll second that.
Okay. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Item N passes. Item O?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And that's another, press, stay right there.
That's why I'm here.
Okay. Paragraph three on our summary highlights. This change order is a result of basically stone engineering did not represent actual field conditions. And so we had to hire a new engineer to go out there, into the field, to do the work that stone engineering should have done. Am I correct in saying that?
In a very basic sense, yes. We did find, once we started construction, we found major discrepancies in what was the actual ground truth to what the plan said. And we felt like it was in the very best interest of the county to hire an engineer to do a third-party review of the plans. That way, we get an unbiased opinion of what's going on. We did that. We got like a 10-page report from them. And so we went back, so we said, okay, this is what needs to be done. And I'll say, I lost confidence in the original engineer because of the magnitude of what we were seeing. So we hired this other engineer to do a redesign of what we found were the discrepancies. Once that was done, we ran this by DOT, because this is DOT funded. DOT was thoroughly understanding. We have money in the budget to cover this, additional work to be done. They're fully aware of that. So what we did was then we went back to the contractor. We said, okay, here are the real quantities. And when they finished doing their look at it, their bid, that's what you see, this is another $278,000 to construct this road the way it should be constructed.
Is there any recourse that the county has back to the first engineering firm that did not, undoubtedly, they didn't go on site and they didn't, I mean, I don't know all...
They had full survey. I know I'm on public record, and I'll say this, I think it was a complete misinterpretation of the survey information. We looked at the survey information. We did not find any errors in that itself, but we did find interpretation from the survey work to the engineering design. Mr. Manning and I have discussed this, and if he doesn't mind, I'll let him answer that question, but I think we are going to pursue...
Mr. Chairman, I'll answer that question. We're going to look at whatever options...
We're gonna look at whatever options are available to us moving forward on this project. First and foremost, that's a DOT-funded project, so we want to work closely with our, with our representatives from DOT as we move forward, get this project to completion. And if there's any assessment after the end of this project that we need to look at other options of recouping any funding on behalf of DOT or the county, we'll take every option available to us.
Mr. Chairman, I think I, is that what I needed to say? Thank you.
Commissioner Turner?
I was gonna pull this one also, if Commissioner Harvey hadn't done it, but, so, I'm good with that answer. If we can do something, we will. I guess my question would be a little more blunt, surprise.
I fully expected that.
Are we still using stone engineering for Putnam County's work?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Sorry, can't help it. So the project will continue on with DOT money, and DOT approved us moving forward, even with the bad engineering, and that we may or may be able to do something about.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right. If there, I think if we all want to say anything, I'd move it forward.
Those are my questions, also, to Press, and I wasn't exactly that blunt, but it wasn't real sharp either, so. Anyway, Commissioner Goddard, do you hear me? Commissioner Rawls, okay?
Is there, in some contracts, you have a trigger. Usually, it's around 9% or 10%. If you go over the stipulated percentage, it automatically triggers O&amp;M insurance to kick in and cover losses due to that. Was, was there any kind of a clause in the contract that was put out?
I believe we looked at that in our contract. We required a consultant to carry O&amp;E insurance. I did not see any trigger amount on, on that particular item, and I believe.
It's E&amp;O, you're right. I said O&amp;M, E&amp;O.
O&amp;E.
Is that something that we need to modify then, in our contracting, to include that?
I'd have.
So we wouldn't have this discussion?
I'd have to defer to Julianne on that, but this is a very standard contract that has been reviewed by numerous professional engineering groups. We kind of go through that with them. I don't know if those types of errors in emissions insurance does have a trigger, but that's one of the avenues that we were certainly going to pursue.
I would encourage us to do that. It would eliminate this discussion in the future. So, you know, if you have a two-million-dollar contract and there's 200,000 change orders, the errors in emissions insurance kicks in automatically for the design professional. And typically, that helps keep the costs down. Everybody works really hard to keep that from happening. But in this case, it, you know, if there was, it sounds like there was just an egregious oversight on their part. If we, if we were to recoup the money with that, would we be able to use that for another project?
It wouldn't go to us, it'd go back to DOT.
Would we not be able to use it? DOT money somewhere else in, in the county?
That would be a DOT decision, and based on history, most likely not. It would go back to that budget line for their, for their use of other projects that they would feel the need to fund elsewhere.
The DOT monies are project-specific, and we just can't take monies and move them around because of the way they advertise the projects and the way they fund the projects. If we were able to recoup any monies, I feel like, like Mr. Suggs said, it would go back to the DOT.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
I'd like to move item O for approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Seeing none, item O passes. And to just take a minute, Press, since both y'all are up here, since we're talking about Fort Gates Ferry Road, I don't know if the other commissioners have been receiving emails about the Fort Gates Ferry and the ferry service. I'll go ahead and comment on that, and I'll ask for a little update from you. I hate to put you on the spot, but you've probably talked about it so much, it's, you know, you've got it memorized.
It's all in second-hand nature now.
The Fort Gates Ferry is the oldest operating ferry in the state of Florida. And we understand this, the historical significance, and the actual benefit that it provides citizens of Putnam County to be able to take the ferry from the east side over to the west side, rather than having to drive all the way to Barbourville and up, or around to Palaca to get to Highway 19 and over to the west. Hurricane Irma destroyed that landing, and FDOT had allowed us some money to rebuild the landing, and this has been going on, part of process of paving Fort Gates Ferry Road, and also trying to get the west side paved from the Fort Gates Ferry side, the west side, to Highway 19. So anyway, this has been in the works. Then the ferry got destroyed. So we are working on getting the landing repaired so we can operate this ferry. And I've had a lot of emails about us just abandoning this project, and by all means, we're not abandoning the project, but projects like this take a lot of engineering, a lot of planning, and unfortunately, a lot of money. And so I'd like for Press to address this. I've addressed most of the people who have emailed me that we are, we have been, and we are working on a solution to get the east side repaired so we can operate this ferry again. Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I'm gonna add on that one, because on the west side, that is, that road is owned by the forestry department, that is 66 and 29, and they're, they are repairing that road, and once they, it's still not repairable. I drove down it, even though I wasn't supposed to. It says residence only, but I went down there anyway. Had to have it in four-wheel drive in my Jeep, or you're not gonna get down to the end. They are repairing that road, and once they get it repaired up to our standards, then we'll take over the maintenance. But at this point, even if that ferry was operational, you cannot get up and down that road if you do not have a very good four-wheel-drive truck. You're not gonna make it.
Mr. Chairman. Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
May I make a comment? I don't know if we were gonna take over the maintenance completely. I thought we were gonna share maintenance on that west side when that time came, but Carl Bauer, the forestry gentleman, made it very clear that they're not in the road business, they're in the forestry management business, and they don't look at those as roads, they're service accesses to get timber out and stuff in that nature. So that, that's been the problem. Is that?
Mr. Manning, I'll say, we had, we submitted their documentation of an easement they required us to fill out. I don't believe, as of this date, we have heard back from them on the easement. Without that, we have no right to be over there, and I believe you were right, we did talk about some cost-sharing of maintenance over there. The, I think the agreement we had was they were supposed to bring the road up to a certain standard, which they have not been able to accomplish yet, and we're kind of, I'm gonna say, the ball's in their court right now.
Mr. Chairman, may I say? And, you know, Congressman Yoho went to bat to get extra money for that road, based on Hurricane, I don't think, Matthew, was it?
I think it was Irma.
Irma, was it? Okay. So he went to bat to get more money for the, but then all of a sudden, now there's a new Congress in play, and there's budget disputes going on, so, you know. What I've been telling people is, we could get you across the river pretty soon, but where you go from there, from the east side to the west side, like Commissioner Goddard said, you're kind of on your own, and that doesn't really work well for people that want to travel that area, so.
Mr. Chairman. Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I, I appreciate the fact that this is part of the Black Bear Scenic Highway. I appreciate the fact that this was one of the longest-running ferries, because the damn thing ain't running a couple of years. So they can still say it, you know, was the longest-running ferry, but it's not at this time. And so I think that we need to look at this the same as what we were looking at it at the last workshop where we talked about this, which is basically, you have some DOT SCOP money, scrap money, SCOP money.
SCOP money.
SCOP money to go in and do some repairs to the landings and what have you, because they're looking at this kind of like a bridge.
Yes, sir.
But the people who were running the barge, their barge is not seaworthy, so they're gonna have to come up with another barge, or the county's gonna have to go in the barge business, which I strongly recommend that we do not do, that we let these people own and run their barge. We had talked a little bit in workshop about possibly taking the second-hand barge, the one that we just got done with Drayton Island, and, or we just retired from Drayton Island, which I'm assuming is still seaworthy, and maybe figuring out a way that we could sell or lease or something without having li, additional liabilities on the county for running this, and I think that's still in progress. I can't really talk to anybody except in workshop and this about it, but I'm assuming that's negotiation's still in process. And so another one thing that I'd like to point out, a key difference between here and Drayton Island, is you got to ride that barge or own a boat to go to Drayton Island if you live there. If you want to drive to the forest from Palaca, then you can drive there. You don't have to climb, go get on this ferry and go across the ferry. I understand the significance, and I understand the argument and what have you, but if you were, if you, you've heard me say this before, if, if we were sitting in two vehicles out on Highway 19, and you, nobody knew you were coming, and that barge was running, you'd drive up there and call or honk your horn or whatever, by the time the barge comes over and gets you and goes back across and lets you back off again, I'll be sitting over there waiting on you to show up by driving around the other way. It remind, this whole thing reminds me about the walkway under the bridge in the city. When they did the, when they did the ribbon-cutting ceremony, they, all the dignitaries cut the, cut the ribbon and walked all the way down and around and back towards the motel over there, and then the sheriff's department had somebody stop traffic where they could all walk back across the street. So, you know, that, this reminds me of about the same thing. I mean, I don't mind being involved in, in what have you, but at some point, buggy whips go away. So, you know, this may be a buggy whip, and so, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I figure that's gonna light your phone up. And your emails.
I just appreciate all the county commissioners working well together. Press, just give us a brief update where we are with the DOT money and the plans.
Let me give a little, give a little bit of history. We, DOT gave us a SCOP grant to fix the ferry landing. It's different money than the Fort Gates Ferry Road itself. There's two different pots of money. We had hired an engineering company, we put together a DOT set of plans for the landing, which included concrete pilings and that magnitude of landing. I believe, Mike, it was, we had about 600,000 or 400-some-thousand budgeted from DOT for the land.
That's correct. The bids came in at 1.2 million.
Right. The first time we bid it, bids were 1.4 million. We looked at it, we did some value engineering, we put it back out on the street, 1.2 million. So we were still, you know, 100% over the DOT budget. DOT, we called them, said, hey, we got a problem. We, we're not anywhere close to the budget. They said, we have no more additional monies to give you, that's it. So we said, well, what about if we tried to go back to the original design with timber pilings to replicate what was there? And they said, okay, we'll kind of buy that. We've had a heck of a time trying to come up with some old ASBILTS or anything to replicate the design of the original landing. We haven't abandoned, this gentleman here spent a tremendous amount of time trying to get to a point, we can get to a set of documents DOT will accept, so we can bid it out and hopefully come in within, close to the budget number that we're getting from DOT. And that, that's where we stand right now, and I'll let Mike really give you an update of where he stands with that.
That's correct. We're in the negotiations process with a designer to produce a set of ASBILTS that DOT will sign off on, and we can advertise for bid. So I should hear back from them within the next two weeks and present a number to the board and DOT to move that process forward.
Okay. All right, thank you. Press, Mike, thank you. Commissioner Rawls?
I'm here. Switching subjects to East Palaca State Farmers Market, I've received quite a few texts and comments from people regarding flooding over on Browning Lane, the residents that live in that area. Are you familiar with that at all? The water runoff coming from the farmers market into that small subdivision there?
I, it doesn't, it's not on my radar screen right now, but certainly, we will check into it.
Is that, are we responsible for that, or is that state property?
I'd have to check. You told me where the, the farmers.
The farmers market in East Palaca, on the west end of the property.
That's all, that's all private over there, that's all state-owned property.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with us?
No.
Okay. I'll let him know.
Okay. Mike, Press, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Chairman.
Yes.
Hey, Press. In, in addition to what Commissioner Rawls just was talking about, last year, when it, when we were getting a lot of water, there's a retention pond on the west side of that State Farmers Market property, that I think y'all were trying to figure out where we could pop off that water or send it or something, because it was flooding out our road, like Browning is, Lane is our road, is the county's road. And so I, I think that having a little more history on this may help what Commissioner Rawls was saying. I think that maybe if we could go over there and take a look at it perhaps, and see when we get a big rain event, that, that pond, that retention pond right there is popping off and going and flooding the area, I'm wondering if we couldn't look and see if there's something that needs to be cleaned, if it's ours. If it's not ours, can we talk to DOT about cleaning their stuff? Or something to try to rectify this problem? It's not a new, and it's been going on ever since I've been here. Of course, one week after I showed up, we had the hurricane with the.
We're certainly looking at that, but I believe that's.
Four-foot rain, so it brought all that to light.
I got four texts saying, good idea on the, on the innovation kitchen, fix the retention pond.
We'll check into that, but I believe that's.
You weren't alone in getting them text.
Did you get it too?
I'm sure, yeah.
I don't know if that's DOT, or maybe just another agency of the state that actually owns that waste station and, and that agriculture area, but we'll, we'll certainly check on it.
Okay.
It is.
All right, thank you, Press. Okay, we'll move on to comments.
Have you taken action on that, item O?
We already passed it?
Yeah, we moved it forward.
Okay. We did, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Help him keep up, sir.
All right, Honorable Tim Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad you mentioned Sarah, because I wanted to introduce to you the lady sitting next to her, that's Debbie Wilkinson. She has moved over to work with us. She came from the EOC, and so we're glad to have her. She's got, you know, government experience, so that's gonna, you know, help us in what we do here as your custodian of the records and clerk to the board duties. We're thankful for her, because you guys meet a lot, which means we have to take a lot of minutes, and so she's gonna help us accomplish that. And Sarah still has responsibilities with the tax deed process and the Value Adjustment Board process. So they're gonna be really busy over the coming year, but we're thankful she's here. So you will see her periodically, and it may be when you call Sarah, you get Debbie. Now, that's, Debbie Wilkinson is, the name is causing me problems, because my administrative assistant's name is Debbie Williamson, and so I know what's gonna happen. She's gonna get jabber from me or instant messages that's supposed to go to the other Debbie. We also, in our office, have three Kayleys working, so it's like, we gotta start looking at names before we get too many more of these, because I just get confused in my old age. So we wanted to welcome her and introduce her to you, and that's all the comments we have today. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Press.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, welcome.
May I say something?
Yeah. Commissioner Harvey?
Honorable Smith, I just want to say this, that Sarah has been a blessing to this board. And if you remember, a few months back, it wasn't a very bright day that we had here at this board, and with the passing of Tony, and Sarah just really has stepped in and been so accommodating, and, and I just really want to thank you for allowing us to have such a really person that really wants to help out. So thank you, sir.
Well, I'll thank you on behalf of Sarah, but she can certainly speak for herself. Sarah also has a big day. Uh, Sarah also has a big day coming up in a few weeks. Uh, she's getting married. So, uh, you know, we'll be, uh, wishing her well and that and, uh, her new life together with her husband. And, uh, so, uh, we're, we're real happy for her and for her service to Putnam County.
Mr. Chairman, that must be contagious because I believe Mr. Reynolds is as well. So, watch the water, folks.
Exactly.
I think ultimatums are happening.
Yeah. Sarah's been a great addition and, uh, she has ties to South Putnam. Uh, my wife Holly taught her mother and went to school with her dad and her, her grandparents. I've known them for, forever. So, uh, so we're, we're lucky to have her. So, okay. Uh, we'll move on to appointments. Do we have any appointments, um, starting with Commissioner Goddard?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
No, sir. I'm having a hard time filling some. So, if anybody out there sees it and they want to serve, let me know.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
Angie, did Gay, did, uh, did she decide she wanted to move forward or not? I can't remember. Gay Esper- Esperon?
The other morning, at six in the morning when I saw.
I mean, her term expired and I knew we were going to reach out to her, but I can't remember.
Yes, sir. I have not heard back from Gay. I'm, I'm under the assumption that she wants to continue on, but I will make a point to contact her.
Okay. Well, if you would please and I, and see if she would and let me know. I mean, I have no problem reappointing her if she wants to continue. I just haven't been able to get up with her either.
Okay. I will do that.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would, uh, Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board for Northeast Florida Regional Council. It used to be chipped by, I mean, uh, chaired by Commissioner Chip Lible. Um, they had a meeting here yesterday and they asked me to sit in for the first little while where they could have a quorum on certain issues they needed to. But they also asked me would I bring that to, uh, to the commission at, for, uh, to see who would be that on a continuing basis. Um, I think most of the meetings are here. Uh, they're only meet quarterly. Um, and before anybody volunteers to do it, I think we need to actually find out what it is and what they do if we don't already know. Because whoever does this, it would take a learning curve because you're going to be chairing the meetings. So, I guess the chair of the meeting is the commissioner who decides to do it. So, it will, it's not a walk-in meeting that not know what's going on. And, uh, evidently they do quite a bit because I had to leave and they were still meeting when I got back from another meeting after. So, they, there are issues that they need to discuss on about regional transportation and that sort of thing and ride solutions at the table. They have, oh heck, they must've had fifteen different people that were at the table from different agencies around the northeast Florida. Um, so anyhow, I just said that I would mention that for, uh, for us to start. And with that, I don't have any further appointments, Mr. Chairman.
You said they, they met once a quarter?
Once a quarter, I think, yes.
Do you know what, day?
I really don't. I just happened to be coming in here and they caught me in the lobby and said, please, can you give us thirty minutes? Because they didn't have a quorum. So, I gave them the time they needed and then they went on and met with the non-boating stuff after I had to leave.
Okay. I'll get that information on what's required and, uh, and get back to the board. Uh, Commissioner Rawls?
Um, underwaterways and trails, uh, we resolved that at the last meeting, um, my.
You're, you're it, right? But isn't that correct, Amanda? Or excuse me, Tabitha?
Yes, but this is a Waterways and Trails Committee members, Central Recreation Board. It's not the Commissioner to Waterways.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So, I guess that would be me, right?
Well, it doesn't have to be a board member. It could be any member of that Waterways and Trails.
Okay. Can you get me a list of the, who's on the Waterways and Trails, I guess? So, maybe we can discuss it at a workshop of see who we can contact.
But I believe Ms. Esperon, if she's, she's on the Waterways and Trails and if she gets appointed back, she, that'll take care of that.
That'll take care of both?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll point her just as soon as I find out that she wants to do it. I mean, uh, no problem.
Okay. Okay. And I have no appointments. Okay. We'll move to, um, county administrator comments. Terry Suggs?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just a morning, so good morning. Uh, just real quickly, I've been taking some notes here. Looks like, uh, uh, from the meeting this morning, uh, I'm to try to get a spot on an upcoming board workshop for the Food Innovation Center folks. Schedule meeting with Drayton Island folks, uh, meet with Press and take a look at, uh, tree issues on Ash and Orange Avenue. And then schedule a meeting with Commissioner Rawls and Press and Angie to go to Bostwick to look at those areas. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. I believe that's it. And if I could just take, uh, one quick moment, uh, Larry Gass, would you, uh, join myself at the podium here this morning, sir? Want to take just a point of order if I could just real quick, Mr. Chairman?
You're good.
That's what he gets for staying for the whole meeting. And, uh, but anyway, I just wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, let the commission know as well as our citizens and our, our staff that today will be, uh, Mr. Gass' last board and county commissioner meetings with us. Uh, Mr. Gass has, uh, uh, served us well and has, uh, pulled double duty as the, uh, saw the waste landfill director as well as mosquito control. Uh, but Mr. Gass has an opportunity in his life that he felt was just too good to pass up. So, uh, Larry, just want to say congratulations and, uh, good luck in your, uh, endeavor and your, uh, new pursuit. And, uh, and just for the record, if anybody's ever on the island of Guam and needs a place to stay, I hear Larry, his wife has graciously opened up their house. So, uh, Larry, if you've got anything you'd like to say?
I heard it was the office at the landfill. In Guam.
Now, that could be. But, uh, anyway, congratulations, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, it has been a great experience working here for the past six years. It was a hard decision to leave. Uh, I thought I'd end up retiring at sixty-six and eight months years of age, um, from here. But they made an offer I couldn't refuse. And it was something that I've always wanted to do. Uh, most of my life, I thought it would be living on a Caribbean island, which was close to home. But now I'm going to be living on a Pacific tropical island on the other side of the international date line, which will give me an opportunity to explore Asia, Australia, New Zealand, Fiji, Bali, uh, all of those different areas that I thought I'd never have an opportunity to see for most of my life. So, I really want to thank everybody. Uh, you know, we try to provide a good customer service and sanitation and mosquito control for the county. Uh, we look at them not as just citizens, but as our customers and we try to treat them as such. And I hope that continues while I'm gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Okay. County attorney, Stacy Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I've got one item. I need to, um, announce, um, that, uh, we need to have an executive session on the, uh, February twenty-sixth, um, BOCC meeting in the, um, matter of, uh, Joe Price versus Putnam County to discuss litigation strategy. That would be a closed session meeting. Court reporter there, very limited individuals. My question for you all is what time you want to have that advertised for? There was some thought in doing it at the end of the regular BOCC meeting. It creates a little bit of difficulty because we don't know how late we're going to go. So, we don't know what time to advertise that for. The other option is we could advertise it for nine oh five AM. So, um, you have to, it has to be, um, it has to be done during a convened BOCC meeting. So, you have to convene the BOCC recess, go into executive session, conclude executive session, come back and reconvene the BOCC meeting. If we did it at nine oh five, um, you could convene the BOCC meeting and go through invocation, pledge allegiance, um, et cetera. Um, then recess that meeting and then the five of you, Mr. Suggs, I, um, our insurance company attorney, could all then go to an, another location, um, such as the conference room, um, to hold the executive session and then come back here. That way, the folks that are in the audience wouldn't have to leave, um, this venue while that happened. So, um, that's the question.
Mr. Chairman. I would suggest that we, that we make it time certain for ten o'clock that morning. And the reason I'm, I'm saying that is we have people that come in here that are getting awards or getting, or making presentations or whatever. I don't really want them to have to sit around and wait on me to be in executive session. So, hopefully we'll be done with that portion of our program by ten o'clock. And then it, we won't have to make them stand around and wait on us. It could take five minutes or three hours. We don't know at this point because I have no idea what's going on.
Yeah. And, and we could certainly do that. I don't anticipate it being three hours.
Okay. That would just be my suggestion, but whatever.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Rawls?
Is there any information you can get us ahead of time so we can be prepared?
Um, yes, sure.
Okay. All right. As I understand, you would want, you're making the suggestion to have it at ten o'clock so we could get through with the first portion of our meeting, which usually includes, um, any presentations, um, or awards and then have it at ten o'clock. So, those people won't have to wait. Is that correct? And we still won't have to make them leave the building at all? Okay. Um, I'm okay with that. So, do for ten or ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, we have a consensus on the twenty-sixth. Okay. We'll go ahead and get that advertised and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll plan on that then, uh, February twenty-sixth at ten AM. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner comments? I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Rawls.
Um, uh, we were acknowledged by the Palaca Housing Authority for being a participant with their programs. Um, I actually have a certificate I need to bring in and don't know if you need to frame and hang it somewhere, but, um, we got that. Went to the CRA meeting the other night with the City of Palaca. Um, as I said before, part of the discussion was, um, revolved around the CRA getting involved in, um, skills training, uh, skills, trades, training and workforce development. Uh, they agreed that, um, it would be nice if, if we could get, uh, a group of stakeholders to a table and form a committee and start working to that end. Um, I know that the college is doing their thing and the school district's doing their thing. We're talking about, um, actually getting everybody together and trying to get a, an established, um, technical center in Putnam County. Uh, had a great meeting the other night with the, um, Bostwick Community Association. And one of the questions that came up was whether or not this commission would be willing to take their show on the road and have, um, uh, town hall meetings. Um, I think it'd be great and I, 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 I think we'd grateful you do it in all five of the districts where we, um, advertise a meeting, go to, um, the different districts, uh, maybe before the budget and after the budget. Um, but, you know, be able to, um, mingle with the public and, um, be with them in the evenings or whatever time, uh, but have, um, town hall meetings. So, that was just something they came up with.
Okay. Mr. Goddard?
Yeah. Anybody who did not go down to the Bassmaster Elite, they missed quite an opportunity. That, I, I was so impressed with Putnam County. We were packed. It was packed. It was packed every day, uh, even on the cold day. And how we call it cold, it got down to sixty degrees. It was, it was very good. It was very well taken care of. I was impressed. Uh, right now, we have going on at the ravines, an antique car show that'll be running, I think, until two o'clock. Uh, but they have, they, they actually took the old Model A's, Ts and went from St. Augustine up to Green Cove. And then they came back down here to, uh, Palaca to the ravines. But again, I always say this, get outside, go look at what's going on. We live in a wonderful, wonderful county with a lot of things going on and, um, it's just a pleasure to be here. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goddard. Uh, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. You know, I always say, if you can't find something to do in this county, get elected. There's plenty to do any given day of the week. I do want to say that, um, Putnam Blueways and Trails, along with our Parks and Recreation, um, Bob Stender with IT, what a remarkable job with the Iron Horse event the other day. It was twenty-four hours of running through Etna Creek Forest. Um, if you, I know we all had different commitments, but I was there that morning when they, they shot the gun. Well, they didn't shoot the gun. You just hollered to go, you know? So, um, yeah, exactly. But that was really a good event. There was over almost ninety participants in that that ran somewhere, some shape or fashion and people from all over. And, uh, it was really well attended and very well put on. I do want to give a shout out too, to the, the Chamber of Commerce with the Bassmasters and all the volunteers. I went down there every morning to watch the launch, which was just remarkable. But the last day, I went down and, um, helped bring the last ten boaters in off of Reed Street, uh, to make their loop and to bring their fish in. Port Dana just looked like she was exhausted. And I was able to, gave me an opportunity to talk to the anglers and ask them about Putnam County. And they were so appreciative of the hospi- hospitality that they got right here in this county, how they were treated well, how everything went smooth for them. They had a need, it was taken care of and they just wanted me to pass that along. But I saw something more remarkable. I saw some people who would line up, young people with hats and shirts and get signatures and their autographs. But I was really drawn to this one gentleman in a wheelchair who I guess really knew all of them. He was just really in tune with every one of them. And they would stop and they would get out of their boat and they would interact with this man in a wheelchair, uh, take selfies. And he would, they would give him little worms or whatever. But it just was so uplifting to see these guys who were exhausted at the end of the day take time to recognize that the audience was out there for them and, and how Putnam County treated them. And, and that was, that was beyond. And, and I tell you one last thing, if you didn't get a chance to log in, because I did Saturday and Sunday, just to see the comments made by the co- the commentators about St. John's River, Putnam County, Palaca, catching fish right off of people's docks. You know, you could see that, hey, if I'm up north in three feet of snow, I could be living there right now. I could be catching these fish that are right off my dock. That was, you can't buy that kind of advertising. And it was just remarkable what, what we saw there. So, I want to say thank you to everybody that was involved. Money well spent. Thank you very much. And this coming Thursday, Valentine's Day, Linda and I will celebrate thirty-four years of marriage. So, thank you, Linda, for putting up with me all these years.
Thirty-four years married to the same woman.
Yes, sir. I lost it for a moment.
Commissioner Turner?
Mrs. Wisniewski, uh, Tabitha reminded me that I have heard from Gay Esperon and she is not wanting to do it. So, if we could look for somebody else for that committee that's from District Three, I could use a little help with that one if possible. Usually when the Fair Board is wanting somebody or somebody gets off of the Fair Board, I go to the, the leaders of the Fair Board or the chairman or president or whatever John is and, and ask him, um, that, can he recommend somebody? And he usually knows somebody and it turns out that they helped real well. They turn out hit the road as volunteers instead of just as committee members. So, perhaps if you'd help me with that. Also, we talked about earlier, um, we talked about that, that we get our agenda a week earlier and, and that it, then I proposed that we may need to ask questions before we come here. And then it was proposed that it's part of the govern, the, uh, the public's, um, purview to know this stuff. Totally agree, one hundred percent. But if you ask the questions before you get here, then staff. But if you ask the questions before you get here, then staff will be prepared to answer them in front of the meeting instead of putting them on the spot, not asking anyone not to bring their questions to the meeting or not talk about things they think is important. I'm just trying to say that staff deserves the respect to let them have the opportunity to be able to answer your questions instead of being dumbfounded in front of, in front of the TV cameras. That's only fair. I didn't really realize it until yesterday. The county owns some orange trees and grapefruit trees out on Curry Road. Is that correct? Okay. Well, evidently, somebody stopped by there to pick some of them oranges that's fallen off and rotten. And our deputies stopped and told them they needed to leave, or he was gonna arrest them for trespassing. So I'd like to figure out how we could let our citizens go pick some of our oranges before they rot. What do we need to do?
Commissioner Turner, Mr. Chairman, that's, wow, that's a new one, so.
Well, it was new to me.
I will, I will certainly look into seeing where we're at, what's going on out there, and if there's an issue that we need to address, we will. You know, first thing I thought of was another revenue source, but if you just wanna give defer, we can do that, too. But, but no, I'll certainly look into and see what we can do to assist.
I certainly don't want them to rot, you know, and fall off a tree and rot. And I guess it may have been an issue sometime in the past because the deputy actually knew about it, and I'm not being hard on you, guide gator, I'm really not. But evidently, he had been told sometime in the past to not let people in there or whatever. So if we do own some trees or whatever, evidently, you wanna say something, press, come on. Are you the one that cut the poor people off, the poor starving people with little children and all, from eating our fruit?
Has anybody done the research to see if they're sweet or sour? Before we let the public in there?
I can stop by it on the way home.
We do own the property on Curry Road. We do, we have now put a lift station in there as part of our sewer project for East Palatka. Most of those trees are deceased and rotting away. I did last year, tried some of the fruit, and it is pretty sour. So I think the trees are pretty well gone. At one time, it was a very active orchard in that area. But I really don't think that it's of too much benefit for people to try to go pick that fruit. Like I said, we tried several of the trees, sampled them, and the fruit was not really edible.
You didn't have permission, though, did you?
Well, we were there doing the lift station.
I guess my point is, I don't, me as one commissioner doesn't really care if some of our citizens steal some of our fruit that we're gonna let fall on the ground anyhow.
Well, we do have it gated off and secured because the lift station there with all the electrical components are there. We do have a gate across the site, and we do keep that secured. So I understand what you're saying, but I don't want people just to go in there. And next thing we know, you'll have our lift station that is not there anymore, 'cause it is in, I hate to say it, but somewhat of a secluded area.
No oranges or grapefruits outside of the fenced area?
No, sir. No, they're all inside the fenced area.
Okay. All right, well, I'll move on, but I think we need to figure out some way not to waste all this stuff, especially if somebody wants to eat it. Yeah, I think we need to look at doing something. Hopefully, you'll look into that a little bit, Mr. Administrator.
Sure.
The, the next thing on my list is, I think today is Mr. Ryan Simpson's fortieth birthday.
All right.
Oh, wow.
Mr. Simpson, would you please stand up?
Happy birthday.
I don't know how. And I wanna end up today by saying, guys, answer your phone calls. I know it's tough. I've talked to them several times about it or whatever, but when somebody is distressed and they can't get hold of anybody or get anybody to call them back, and I'm not making this any one person, it's very important that we can at least touch base back with them at some reasonable amount of time. I have figured out that if we let it go two or three days before we call someone back, then most of the time, we don't call them back at all. It just falls between the crack. So please let me challenge everyone to call that works for the county to return their phone calls within a, as quickly as possible. It's a big deal to some people, especially if they're in trouble with something. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Just a couple of comments. As Commissioner Goddard and Harvey always say, there's always something to do in Putnam County. If you, if you don't know, just look in the newspaper or advertisements. Busy weekend or busy week for Putnam County, and bringing a lot of people in from outside to showcase what Putnam County has to offer. First, the Iron Horse Endurance Race. That's something that's unique, but I think it's growing and building. So I appreciate all the people who are involved in that. And St. John's River State College was able to host the Capital City Baseball Tournament. They were there for, you know, three days, and a number of teams, so that brought a lot of people in to town to showcase the college and Putnam County and Palatka. And the big one, the Bassmasters Elite, we had this tournament back in two thousand sixteen, and we were lucky enough to get again in two thousand nineteen. And it brings some of the top seventy-five anglers into our county and the Bassmaster program, all the sponsors, all the people. I was invited to the steak dinner that they provide for the staff, the marshals, and the participants Wednesday at the Shrine Club. Mayor Hill and I were able to welcome them as a group, and I should've taken Commissioner Harvey's advice and said those fishermen are ready to eat at the time I got there, so the less I say, the better. So, but anyway, we welcomed them and thanked them for being here, and they really appreciate that. I also participated with a number of people up here, and the chamber staff and volunteers to help park the trucks and the trailers. And we get there at about five o'clock in the morning. It's a lot easier than the Wolfson tournament, 'cause you only have seventy-five. But they're very appreciative of what we do to roll out the red carpet to welcome them here. And the exposure that Putnam County will get from ESPN's coverage, it'll be national and international. I think we're gonna get four hours of coverage from ESPN for this tournament. And if you think you're too old to bass fish, Rick Klund won the tournament in two thousand sixteen, and he won the tournament in two thousand nineteen, and he's seventy-two years old. So anyway, so there's, there's future in bass fishing for all us older guys. So anyway, with that, I think those are all my comments. I wanna thank everybody for being here. We have a two o'clock workshop. Is there any further business to come for this commission? We stand adjourned.